Stand by, one minute. All right, stand by. All right, here we go, and five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to December seventh, two thousand and fifteen, Long Meadow Select Board Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody have any announcements tonight? Go ahead, Steven.
The leaf drop off site will be open an extra week due to the favorable weather. If the weather turns bad, because I just reported that and jinxed us, I'll apologize in advance, but no.
Should be good through the weekend.
Yeah, should be good through the weekend, and the Conservation Commission did sign off on that, so. So if people had bagged their leaves and haven't picked up yet, you can take them down there, as long as you have a dump sticker.
Good. Any other comments? Okay, resident comments?
Members of the select forum and citizens of Long Meadow. As we're listening over the years, different problems we've had in town. And we're listening to this now that we may be hitting our tax limit. We're gonna have to cut. Before that happens, I think we should be proactive in some ways to reduce cost of some services and other things that is costing the town money. There was one issue that came up a few years ago. They wanted to get people to sponsor our athletic fields. And the big problem with that was they didn't want signs all over the place to make it look terrible like coming into Long Meadow at McNelly Field. And that was basically, well, I just assumed not to see them either. But in that case now, where we really need the money coming in, if we got streets, uh, street signs, that's one size thing, saying this field is supported by, and you put the company's name or the person's name on it, and you hang it right on the fence, not all over the place, but just as the people go in. That may be one way of getting money to get those fields in this condition that the people that use them want to. And a lot of people will support something like that. Second, every time we send, uh, take a house into receivership and have to sell it, we really don't make money on the thing. And we have to worry, how long is it gonna be vacant after it's been vacant for about a year or more in the town? What I would like you to consider is, because a lot of people I've heard over the things, the people that work in town, they don't, they get the money and they just take it and they leave, they don't live in town. If we took a house that has to be put up for sale, had the assessor make a reasonable assessment of the value of it, and offer it to the town employees on a lottery system, any town employee that has worked for us at least seven to ten years or more, and see if they would be interested in that. That way, what we're paying them is gonna come back, at least partly, in taxes. And they're gonna worry about our town, they're gonna be good citizens because they've been good workers to us. I thank you very much.
Okay, Richard, thank you.
Actually, can I, Richard, do you, I didn't quite process everything you just said about the last proposal.
Okay.
So, so I'm sorry, how, how would we come into possession of the properties that we would then sell?
Well, failure to pay taxes, abandoned property.
Okay.
Sometimes the people just forfeit it to the town. It becomes an eyesore, becomes a problem, becomes legal things. It goes for sale, and because of its condition and everything, you don't have an awful lot of people, it's just the people that are speculating, and they're not gonna pay anything because they want it, just an extra investment. If you take somebody that works for our town, they've been a good town employee for a number, as I said, seven to ten years, you indicate it's gonna be up for sale, and you're gonna give a lottery. People that are interested, let, let us know, and we'll draw from those interested people.
Okay.
And to win money back on the town.
Okay, thanks, I understand, thank you.
Select Board comments.
The only thing I've got is to remind everybody, in case you forgot, that ERC five, East of the River Chamber of Commerce is having that social this Thursday night, where they asked for all public officials to attend if they were free. That's everything I have, so, Stephen, you have anything? Other than the.
For town manager report?
No, I mean, anything, you sound like you're getting ready to speak.
Because isn't Tom Manager Report.
Oh, okay. Upstaging, okay, Town Manager Report.
Just prepping.
Town Manager Report.
Thank you, Richard, okay, so you have the report in the packet, couple of items. The soils work to test the suitability of soils for a DPW facility at Wolf Swamp Field has taken place. I think they're still working on, the engineering company is working on the report, but we should get some preliminary findings at our next task force meeting, which I believe is tomorrow night. I don't know if you had a chance to go out there, but they did flag what would be the outer limit of the site. So you can see, kind of, in the field, what it would, what would be, where the, essentially the parking area of the DPW would end, is shown in the blue line on that image. When you take, when you combine where the line is, you go out there and look at what the parking area is, it's probably twenty-five percent or less of the playing field space. I've been working with Barry Jarvis, the Parks and Rec Director, on options for, kind of, reorienting some of the fields that are there, and we're, you know, having that conversation as we go. We have submitted a access agreement to the owner of Grand Meadows to do similar soils testing at that site. I have not yet received it back.
Have you followed up with him?
I have, often. He's, they have received it, they acknowledged that they received it, and the owner said he would be getting back to me soon. So, the other thing is, the other mi- next milestone is, is the hiring of our owner's project manager, which, as we discussed at town meeting, is a requirement under the Massachusetts construction law, public construction law, excuse me. Those proposals are due on Wednesday, we did have a conference call with the procurement director and some interested firms, so there is interest in this proposal, and I think that that'll be, for those of you who have been on public projects, you know that an owner's project manager does a lot of behind the scenes work and keeps things organized and moving forward, so I'm looking, I think it's gonna be a great advancement in the effort when we have the firm, the owner's project manager on board. Similarly, the COA, we are getting in the process of.
Hold on, Alex had a question.
On the DPW facility, Stephen, I just had a couple of questions. The picture that's in your memo, that looks to be a new picture, but it's, like, really small, it's very hard to read. Is, is there some way we could send that around in a, kind of, readable way? The, the other question I had was, it appears that the intrusion into the playing space, where that blue line is and where the stakes are, reflects one out of the two watercolors. Remember that we had gotten the two watercolors prior to the town meeting? And one watercolor showed a larger intrusion, one was a smaller. This looks to be consistent with the smaller, am I getting that part right?
I honestly didn't hold the two side by side, because the watercolors are really just that, they're just illustrations.
Okay.
The, once we get through schematic phase, which is the design phase, they'll start after the OPM is onboard, we'll get a much clearer sense, based on also the soil testing, on where the building will actually land on the site. Everything, the other thing is just illustrative.
But, because you were saying it was the outer limit, which, kind of, made me think, like, we're making some sort of commitment, like, it'll go that far and no farther? Am I, am I understanding it correctly or no?
Based on where we are in design today, yes. And, like, as we've talked about, it's really the, you know, the closest point to that line is the parking area, which will be a shared parking area with the fields, you know, in evenings and weekends. So that's why we wanted to make sure the parking area is close, as close to the fields as, as practicable, given the site's security and electric strengths.
Now, here, here's the other question about the intrusion on the fields. I imagine during construction, they might want to or need to use parts that they're, that are not gonna be part of the facility to get access to the part they're building on. Has there been any thought to how much intrusion there would be during that phase?
We're not there yet.
Okay, you don't know. And then, finally, and, because somebody, a resident emailed me, and it was a good question. Because one of the things that you had talked about at town meeting was that the parking could be shared and maybe even help the parking situation at Wolf Swamp Fields. And, you know, it occurred to me that our existing DPW facility has a fence around it, so that most of that space inside there, you know, isn't really a place where the public can park. I mean, are, are we anticipating that the public could park inside the fence? I assume we're gonna have some kind of security around here, right? I mean, so how, how is that gonna work, I mean?
Yes, we are going to have security and, you know, gates and things like that. But the area that's shown in the parking area, essentially the building will be the largest part of the security perimeter. And if you're looking at this, this drawing, there, down on the lower end of the blue line, where there's a little bit of a reverse L shape on the building there, you see that?
Yeah.
We're anticipating a gate there, and then a gate around the other side of the building. So materials and storage and vehicles will all be, kind of, in the lower right-hand corner, and on that portion of the site, and not, and secure it through fencing and gates and things like that. The parking area itself will not be with, behind fencing.
Okay, so, so where would the, where would, where would be the accessible parking area, at least on this diagram?
Um, there's a U-shaped thing there, it looks like a, the letter U, right next to the thing that's closest to the line, the blue line. Uh, that's the, the parking area. Uh, and if you've been to the current facility, the administrative and visitor parking area is not behind a fence, it'd be similar to that, like we have today.
Right here, that block right there.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause that, and, 'cause the current setup is there's a bunch of parking at the far end, right? And then there's parking that, kind of, is along the road. So we would be losing all the parking at the far end, and then some of the parking along the road? Am I getting that part right?
Well, one of the things we're looking at is, is reconfiguring the parking along the road as a part of the project. And the parking area in the back currently is underutilized, because it's gravelled and not striped. And so we don't get as much parking out of it as, as we should, each time we have, like, a jamboree or something, it gets, kind of, jumbled. And most times, people just don't even go back there, they just park on somebody's front yard.
Right, because it's just, it's a, it's a longer walk, that's all. But we would be losing that, right? I mean, because that would, I mean, according to the diagram, that's where the facility's gonna be.
But based on the feedback I've received from both Barry Jarvis and the Parks and Rec Board member who's on the task force, they, they feel like it's a good trade. Having the parking be paved and striped, and the parking along the road currently be reconfigured is an advancement, not a, a negative compared to what they have today.
So do you think, I mean, are we gonna have more or less parking? Or do we know?
I mean, I'd be speculating right now to, to go out and counsel, but, I mean, I don't, I don't even know that we could tell you exactly how many parking spaces we have out there, because they're ill-defined.
You have to do it in square feet, I'd probably.
Yeah, but then there's driving lanes, and, you know, how many handicapped spaces do you need for an event? It's all, you know, kind of up in the air.
Just along that line, so, that one, you know, when people generally pull in, they park on that one section by the gate. And will that be removed, or will that be paved?
That was one of the things we're looking to reconstruct and pave.
Reconstruct and pave, all along that strip?
Yeah.
And then it, where it expands, will be the building site at the end. And will this be a two-story building or a one-story building?
Probably, I mean, parts of it will be two stories high, but it won't be two stories, like the equipment bay, where we store the, where we store the vehicles and things, but that's gonna be two stories tall, but it's only gonna be one story. There's a certain height you have to have in there for the equipment. The others, in terms of the other stuff, that's a thing we'll flush out during design.
Yeah, because it's possible you would have some of the office two-story.
Yeah, I mean, no, no design element has been put on the table or off the tables, or I guess they're all on the table until we get through schematic design.
Right, because if we're looking at the footprint, if that's a concern to people on the board, and, which it is, you know, going more vertical would probably be a good, good plan, I mean, even three stories.
I'm not an architect, but I do believe that soil conditions do drive a lot of that, because if you have to do deeper footings for a foundation, you may be better served doing a smaller footprint with an elevator than you would doing a wider building that's one story.
Okay.
With the thing that, with the one proviso, that an elevator is extremely expensive.
Now, the other thing I was wondering about is, you know, storage of different things that are, you know, I don't know, some trucks and different things that may be not used on a daily basis. Is there any discussion about storing some of the, keeping those stored in the same location? Because if there was a flood or some major catastrophe, we, most likely, would have enough notice to move things out of that location. And has that, it all been discussed?
No, I think we wanna consolidate everything to one spot and not have satellite, you know, satellite areas of, or pockets of equipment and things like that, I think everything can be accommodated on the site here. I don't believe would, you know, change, I mean, the other thing is, it's not just, the DPW down there now is equipment, tools, materials, it's not just vehicles that would need to be moved, it's people's workplaces.
Yeah, right.
Records and things like that.
Sure.
And by and large, they do use fairly, most things fairly regularly. And so you'd be talking about, you know, driving all the way across town to get a vehicle to go back, and it's much, I think you'd develop some inefficiencies, but, like I said, nothing is off the table as we sit here tonight.
Yeah, because if we're looking at the, reducing the footprint, you know, some people on the board are concerned, I, I think it's a legitimate concern in terms of playing fields, you know, if things like plow, plows, that are only used in the winter, could be stored, I mean, it isn't like we're, it's, it's not a half an hour drive across town. We're talking about seven minutes to get from one place to the other. And if there are certain things that can continue to be stored, even if we had to buy, you know, some kind of a covered platform, so they would be out of the snow, but, you know, that's something that we also should think about, and, but, thanks for the preliminary work.
Stephen, does this, because it just occurred to me, does this include moving the fuel storage and dispensing for the town?
Yeah, I, I think the idea now, notwithstanding Tom's suggestion, the idea currently is to completely vacate the site, except for the recycling yard, but we're, we're gonna look at that as well, whether or not that should be moved.
Mm-hmm.
Most of it's gonna be cost. I mean, what the biggest driver is gonna be cost to do certain things, and then what do you gain for the cost? I think the idea, though, is to clear the majority of the exist, existing site, to make it suitable for some other use. I mean, we don't believe that it's, it's not suitable for building our building, so we don't believe it's suitable for building any other kind of building. So, like I said, solar farm, playing fields, you know, a million different ideas have been kicked around. But I think the idea is to get it, you know, to clear, environmental hazards, to the greatest extent possible, mitigate it, and then see what we have in terms of moving for, for reuse.
Two other things, our meeting Monday night, Bernie recommended or suggested that, yeah, recommend, he suggested, we might consider issuing a motion to, for status report and next steps on the DPW project, including community involvement. And I'm hoping that there's a feeling of, of support to do that, because I'd like to place that motion, if I, if I could. A motion to ask the town manager to deliver to us a status report, including next steps for the DPW project, which would include dating the community involvement.
Yeah, we're getting ready to put the schedule together, as I say, you're getting more of the, it's the, I guess the catch-22 that you're at right now, Mark, is that we're not sure which site can even move forward. That's what's really holding this whole thing just solid in the water. And without having a site, we're not pushing anything forward than we've already pushed, saying that, you know, we decided to move the complex up and we're looking for a site. And I, I don't know, what, are you two weeks away or so of getting that final determination made?
Like I said, we haven't, we haven't even built access Grand Meadows yet.
Yeah.
It's privately owned, and, I, I mean, we haven't really looked to force the issue, but.
Well, that's, that's another interesting thing, I mean, what do we do if we have to force the issue? I mean, you can't very well force somebody to do soil samples on their property. I mean, it's something you can't do, it's just.
I mean, I, there's gonna be community involvement, I think I've made that clear. I think I would agree with Bernie's comments that the task force of residents is community involvement. I am always, you know, confused as to why the task force that's been meeting on this gets rejected as a, as an element of community involvement. But they are members of this community who have been deeply involved in the project. I understand that's not the same thing as a public forum dedicated specifically to this issue, but I think we've always known that we're gonna have a public forum, as soon as we had, kind of, a holistic presentation of information to make to the, to the public. I mean, I don't mind, you know, I, I certainly have made the commitment to, you know, have community involvement, have public forums and things like that, I think that's all appropriate, because the people are ultimately gonna decide. But as we sit here tonight, if you're asking me to plug in a time when I know one hundred percent we're gonna have the information we need, I don't know that I could do that, I mean, be, I would say probably close to a month, by the time we could have something that we could really promote to the community.
Right, no, I'll second the motion.
Well, what is the motion, though? I mean, we've, we've just said what we've got, what do you hope to achieve? There's nothing there.
I, I think it's, for me, having made the motion, it's a guideline that, you know, it's not a hard and fast, gosh, we'll, we're gonna do this, but here's the timeline we're looking for. If things fall behind or things get moved up, we get notified. Maybe it's, it's a, maybe it's a PERT chart that has a, a line instead of a date that says, within this three-week period, we expect to do this.
Isn't that the task of the committee to formulate that and bring it forward? I mean, you were on, you were on a task force on the same thing.
No, the task force I was on had a.
Site selection.
Had a very defined goal with a very defined endpoint and timeline. And, and we worked to the timeline, got to that timeline and shut the, the task force down. I mean, I, I will tell you that I'm also think that we're getting to the point with the amount of money we've committed now, an additional four hundred and seven, sixty-four, five thousand dollars, that I believe this ought to move from an administrative committee to a select board-appointed committee, so that they hold their meetings with, you know, with, in open meeting laws and keep minutes, and so that they are visible to anybody in town who wants to see what the status is. Because right now, one would have to know who's on the committee to go a- ask them what's going on, because there are no, and by necessarily, there aren't.
Do you think there's benefits to that, or can you define the benefits?
Oh, I think there's a lot of benefits of open meetings.
What are they?
The, the, it's, it's greater visibility.
Over what we're doing now, at this.
It's much greater visibility.
At this, I mean, at this particular point on where you're at, when you have nothing yet.
But we, but the fact that we've approved now six hundred and thousand dollars total for this project, it's, it's beyond, we're, kind of, looking into it as a, as a town manager's task force. You know, the analogy with our school building committee is pretty, is pretty good. We're, we're going out to hire an OPM, an owner's project manager. This thing's moving forward, I want it to move forward, but I want it to move forward, you know, within the broader scope of, of a town visible committee. And I think to say, we don't need a, you know, a, a select board-appointed committee, we can continue with this town manager-appointed task force, I think is, gives, if nothing else, it gives an appearance like we don't want it.
Wouldn't you appoint somebody different to the committee, is that what you're saying?
I don't know, I doubt it, but we might add people, might delete people, and more importantly, we're gonna get to a committee that's more open, that's my take on it. Now, that's a, that's not the, the, the motion here. The motion here is strictly to provide us some kind of a timeline, plus or minus, it doesn't have to be a dead-on timeline, that says, here's where we're going, you know, does the, you know, are we moving toward a, a larger vote at, at town meeting in, in the spring? Are we moving toward, trying to fund this at our town, uh, town election this, I guess, June? You know, I don't know that we are that, I think, you know.
I've made those statements, sitting in this chair, that we're doing that.
We're looking to do that, but I think we need to go out publicly, tell people that's where we are, because those statements haven't been made.
It's been said.
Well, I.
Can I make a comment? I have, I have no problem with the motion.
I'm puzzled, I just.
Because I, you know, Richard happens to be a member of the task force, so he knows that I've been reporting, I believe accurately, the work of the task force and the recommendations that come out. I did, I did, you know, display the names of the task force members at town meeting, that website, or that presentation, I believe, is on our website, so people could go find the task force. I think what's more, Mark, to your point about community engagement, every task force member knows they have a mission to go out and talk to people about this project every chance they get. That's part of the, that was part of our mission. You know, we have ground rules and goals as a task force that we agreed to in our first meeting, and part of that is raise public awareness of the project. Uh, so I, the net effect of what you're asking for is, is going to be taking place anyway. I mean, I think I've just provided you with an update on everything that's happening, and so I don't, I feel like I've communicated pretty broadly. So, you know, I, I guess, I'm trying to not react as if this is the, that the motion or the suggestion about the select board task force is somehow a indication that I haven't been forthcoming and included people and been public with the information that we have, because I, I do believe strongly that I have done all of that. Uh, but this, I view as, and I hope it's correct, somewhat of a, the, the motion is kind of a codification of where things are going, and that we're gonna do that no matter, anyway. Um, so I, like I said, I have no problem, I, I feel like we've had nothing to hide, and we've wanted to share information that, that is fully developed, as soon as we have it.
I just had a comment, is, Mark, would it be helpful for you if minutes from these meetings were posted?
But there are no minutes to the meetings.
Yeah, we're not keeping minutes.
Oh, there's no minutes.
Because it's a, it's a town manager's. That, that, that's, that's the issue, that, that town manager task force don't, by law, require issue, but require minutes.
Yeah.
And that's really, for me, the only difference.
We, we have, I mean, I take notes, but I think it's not. We, we have, I mean, I take notes, but I think it's not, the meetings aren't a meeting like this where we kind of sit and each person takes their turn talking. And we have like an agenda item. It really is, here's a piece of information and then we all just kind of discuss it in, in the group. And I, and I haven't, you know, had someone come and, and been directed to, to take minutes. I mean, I'm sure everybody has their own individual notes, but everyone who's in the room is actively engaged in discussing and formulating thoughts. And, and like I said, I take notes of kind of the offshoots of the conversation, but while we're in it, we're all, it's very, an iterative process. And I, so I, I guess it's a little bit on me that, you know, Mark, you've made the comment that taking minutes here, even though you take good notes, you're here to participate in the discussion, not to take minutes. Everyone in the task force has that same mission and that's the only reason why we don't take minutes is because we don't have somebody assigned to just perform that task.
Well, would, um, you know, Mark's point, I, you can't walk away from the point. Uh, would it be more appropriate for us to have a, uh, unofficial appointed board that is doing open meetings and, and minutes? I mean, would we, would we fulfill the need? I don't, I don't, we haven't heard any complaints. That's the reason, Mark. I, would it, would it fill a, fill the need better? I mean, we're, we're maturing that. We're getting the OPM. Is it more appropriate now to get that thing to the formality?
If, if you're asking me, I, I would say that, you know, this is kind of a Back to the Future moment. The first thing we suggest, that we suggested was a permanent building committee and the board didn't really, wasn't really into the idea at the time. Uh, and then we gave some thought to how best to move forward. And that's why I appointed the ta- the task force in response to not having a permanent building committee.
Well, you're right. You're, you're right. You were refused the opportunity.
Right, so we, we put that forward. It was rejected. So I went with the task force. And, and again, we have nothing to hide. Um, the big problem with, um, and I say, I shouldn't say it's a problem, but the, the logistical concern I have is one of the ground rules we have the task force is that the show goes on no matter who shows up. And everyone's kind of agreed to that because they're volunteers. And if people can't make a certain meeting, we can't, we don't sit on our hands and just say, we're not gonna decide. Everyone understands we're gonna keep the project moving forward. And, and we've had good attendance at the meetings. Uh, but we didn't wanna, you know, a lack of quorum or a lack of having everybody present. Either, I mean, the project would take four times as long to get to a, you know, we wouldn't have made half the progress, progress we've made. If you have a formalized committee and you can't get a quorum or, you know, s- you need a certain number of people to take motions and things like that. It, it does make it much more difficult to advance the project. And I, I, I think that the community members that are serving on this task force have just done a phenomenal job. Um, really identifying the concerns that the community are gonna have and really made the project significantly better. So minimally, I'd want the same people in the room. Uh, but I just think it puts a lot more pressure on them to attend meetings and, you know, develop a quorum. Then you're gonna have a chair of the, um, committee that's gonna have, you know, some additional responsibilities.
How do the OPM fit in with the other one, when they had the building committee, school building committee?
The OPM took minutes.
Yeah, and listen, you know, Mark, I think that's a great point. And I don't know how many, how many meetings we're gonna have the OPM attend upfront. Um, but certainly once we have an OPM, he or she could take minutes at the task force. I guess, and obviously I am somewhat biased. I don't believe there's a need in terms of developing a quality project and making sure the voice of the community is heard. Um, to, to go to with a formal committee structure versus what we have. Um, but I don't think that, uh, it, you know, it, it makes it impossible to get it done either. So, I mean, I, I, I think I, my preference is to, to, I don't wanna lose the momentum we gained. Um, but certainly, you know, I had suggested this initially and we, we would make it, we would make it work if we needed to.
Which is, I, I don't care.
You know, on this subject, I mean, yeah, at some point, uh, you know, people that are in favor of this project are gonna have to go to the people and say, look, we, there's a very good reason to raise your taxes, you know, a significant amount. You know, what led up to, to that case being made for the high school was a lot of public meetings over months and I think even over, over a year period. Um, and the ability to know when the meeting is, to give input, to have some back and forth, to review the minutes if you can't be there, that was a huge part of that debate. Um, and I, I think it would look pretty anomalous to people who have been part of that high school debate to have something pretty different, um, in this case.
Well, we're meeting tomorrow night before the task force meeting with Bobby Barquette and Peter Greensberg. And more, more along what you were saying is they went through it with the schools and we wanted to get together and say, okay, let's sit and put all our heads together. And why don't we pose that questions to them tomorrow night?
And Peter Greenberg is actually on the task force specifically because of his experience with the school building committee and his involvement with the high school. Yeah, I, I guess.
If we're, see if we're ready at that point. I think that's what I'm at. We know it's gonna be formalized sooner or later, Mark.
I mean, this is really, I mean, you know, compared to the school bill, the school project, we are, if you're talking about vote on June, what, tenth, seventh, whatever it is, to have people go to the polls, you know, which is gonna be a high turnout election because.
It's presidential.
What's that?
No, no.
No, it's not presidential.
No, no, because, because when you tell people that their taxes go up, they tend to show up at the polls. Um, and they wanna weigh in on that. I mean, we're what, six months from that? And, and to, to not even have a committee that opens, that meets in public, uh, prior to that. I, I, I think you're, you're gonna get a reaction from a lot of people saying, this is being sprung on us or I haven't heard about this before.
I guess my.
There was no way anybody could say that about the high school.
The only thing I'd say that is while I, I do, like, I do agree that people wanna have some level of input and, and, you know, community outreach. Um, you know, I do, I said this the other night, I, I do believe two town meetings, which are official, like the official community forums, where not only do people get to show up and hear information, they get to decide that night what happens. Um, this project has been germinating for thirty years. It's a little different than the high school in that regard, that I think there are many members of this community, many people are gonna vote, who have been hearing for thirty years that we need a new DPW facility. And, uh, I believe the, the physical case, the picture tells a thousand words case is much more stark, um, on this project. And I, and that's honestly the feedback I've received from people in the community who have spoken to me about this, that it's, you know, it's just a question of where, not if. Um, and, and I may be reading that wrong. I mean, Alex, I, I may only be hearing from people who support the project. Um, but I, I view it as a little different. But again, I, I will repeat myself. I have always viewed since the day I was hired as town manager, when I was told in my interview that getting a DPW facility done was the top priority for the board. And my project management experience was one of the reasons why I was selected. Community has to be involved in this is, uh, we don't get to the election part though, without getting our approval from the select board and then town meeting. And that's what we focus on each time is what does town meeting need to know to make a decision on this? Um, so there's different phases of this project and different, um, I'd say different methods of communicating with the public, but different ways in which you communicate the public and different information points. And it's just, you know, the, the discussion was raised about, look, by you actually, by looking at all three projects kind of in a, in a package. And that's, I think from a financial projection standpoint, we're already in the process of, of laying out what that'll look like cause we know that that's a question the public's gonna ask. But in terms of looking at the.
Who's the we? When you say we, who's the we?
Uh, Paul Pasterzic and I, looking at the debt service projections. Um. Each project is at different phases of development, different phases of necessity, quite honestly. And, um, you know, different levels of cost and impact and things like that. And so they're not moving on the same track. They're all on kind of different tracks. But you can certainly project guesstimate costs on the middle schools and the senior center. Uh, we'll know much more about the DPW in a specific way, but, uh, you're, I mean, we do need to project what would be, what would be the impact if all three went forward, but not all three have, have been approved to go forward. So that's why it's, it's not an easy thing to just say, we're gonna do them all as one kind of package.
Okay, what was your motion, Mark?
Let's see, no.
That, that was the most benign motion I, I think we've ever had, but.
What?
I think that was the most benign motion we had.
No, yeah, the motion, the motion was to deliver for, to the select board, a, uh, a status report and next steps for the DPW project, uh, including timing for community involvement and, and other key decisions.
Okay, you, you think it needs to be a motion?
It's, it's actually exactly what I submitted, but that's, you know, that's fine. In my town manager report, this, I mean.
Right, right, but I think we're looking for, for a form, something, you know, evergreen and, and.
It's on letterhead.
Okay, uh, any more discussion on the motion? All in favor? And I'm on the committee, so it's gonna be more works well.
Okay.
So, pass.
Did you vote?
No, abstaining, cause I, I, I'm the committee. I don't think it's appropriate of me to vote that way. That's fine. Uh, now, on the other, on the other issue that we had a verbal on, uh, we're gonna meet with Bobby and them tomorrow night. And why don't we pose the questions tomorrow night and say, okay, when is it, is it time now to go formal? And start getting this in and see, see what their feelings are. Okay?
I guess, I'm, I, you know, I mean, I, I have a lot of respect for Bobby and Peter. They've done a phenomenal job in the school committee. I'm not sure why it's their decision on whether it's time on the separate project to, to go forward with a, with a, with a more public committee at this. You know, I think that it, you know, if we wanted, and, and, and Steven, I voted against the, the public committee in the first place because it wasn't ready. We were just kind of, it was an exploratory thing, but, you know, we've gone from exploratory to we're into this thing now at least knee deep, if not waist deep. And that's, to me, there, it comes a time for change. You know, if it's the sense of the board to wait to see what these guys have to say, that's fine, but, you know, I, I, I think it's crazy serious.
Just try to set what we're doing tomorrow night.
Well, I understand that you're.
Specifically meet with them.
I, I, and I understand that. The point is, if, you know, we might decide that we wanna do that, whether they think it's a, a recommended thing to do or not.
Okay, then you have the option of putting a motion on the table.
Fine, I'll, I'll, I will do that then. I'll make a motion that the, the current town manager's task force be converted to select board task force. Uh, for the, for the DPW facilities. And we start by, uh, asking the select board to ratify the appointment of the current members.
I'm sorry.
Let me get in the discussion. Let me get a, get a second.
See, get a second.
On this motion?
Second.
Okay, will you add discussion?
Well, I just think that we've done a lot of, I mean, at the last town meeting, there was two major presentations on, on what's going on with this. I mean, I, I don't think people are in the dark. I think there's been a lot of stuff, um, in, in the newspapers. There's been regular press releases about where things are at. Um, so, I mean, I, I'm thinking that we probably should wait, um, to hear from the next step. I mean, you've sort of, um, you've put the message out that, that you wanna have, that you, you, you think we should move in this direction. But, um, you know, I think there are, I, I, I think I'd agree with Richard, you know, Richard, that the meeting tomorrow night maybe could clarify this. And this could be a motion that could come back at a future meeting. Um, but that's my opinion.
Can I go to discussion?
Yeah, could it?
Tom, were you referring to my presentation as a major presentation?
Well, there was two presentations.
Well, that was very, that, that's, that's very flattering for you to say that. Well, thank you.
So, I, the only thing I'd say, Mark, is, uh, and again, I, I don't object strenuously to this. The only thing I'll say is it feels like changing horses midstream because you talked about how we're knee deep or waist deep. That's actually a statement of this project has moved forward further than possibly it's ever been before in terms of generating community support and analyzing sites and working through design. So what, what has been a top priority for the board has now hit a new high watermark in terms of progress. Largely because of the work of this task force. And to change the, the construct of it now, even though again, I'm not opposed to it, it just feels a little bit like, why, 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 why fix it if it isn't broken? And, um.
And, and Steven, I, I, I agree with you.
And it's, and one other, one other point on that, and that's a, that's actually the lesser of the two points. Um, the bigger point is I would recommend that we define the commit, the structure of the task, the, um, select board committee. Uh, I can go back and get my notes out about the permanent building committee, but define number of people, terms, types of people. Let's define all of that before kind of winging it like we're doing now. Uh, because we don't wanna have a demolition delay committee on our hands where they're just endless terms, you know, forever, cause it wasn't clearly defined at the beginning. And, and I guess what I would ask is, let's do that first and then bring it back. And then at, at that point, I mean, I think our discussion with Peter and Bobby in terms of the rec- the logistics on one versus the other, we can report. But that's all, hey, if you wanna proceed, that's fine.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Richard, if I just, Steven, I just wanted to respond. I, your comments that, a couple of things that, that you said that this project has gone, you know, gone further. And I think you're, you're absolutely right, it has. Uh, you know, the, the, the statement about the, I think you said something like the, this project is well-known territory. I think a project has been on the books since whenever. This project has not been on the books until just the last few months. I think the, the definition and, and refining a definition of a wolf swamp road cited facility is relatively new. You know, I, you know, I have no doubt that five well-meaning, well-positioned and, and people with a, a task in mind can sit in a room and make great progress. But I think the potential for success depends upon bringing this out in the open to the broadest number of people, not just this task force, but the broadest number of people with access to, to minutes and, and the ability to come to an open meeting that's posted or anything else they wanna do and, and that, that we cannot do now if we're gonna have success. To, to keep this as twelve people who meet, you know, whether there's five people there or twelve people there, no minutes and, and not open to, to public comments, to me is, uh, is, is not providing the greatest potential for success. And, and, and Tom, that's why I think we move this forward and we do it on our timeframe as opposed to, let's keep it as a task force as long as possible. I think the longer we do it, the more trouble we have. That's just my comment.
Okay, and I'll make some comments. I think, I think any project should, the genesis of it should be at as low a level as you can have it. For exactly what you said. Because if you have fifty, sixty people in a room, you may never make progress and we've seen that. Um, there is a point where full disclosure should be made available and full disclosure is being made available now. I mean, just cause it's a task force meeting that he's having, that still is open. Anybody could walk in that meeting. The meeting is not closed.
How would anybody know about it?
It's not posted.
But we don't, we don't post. I mean, we don't.
Yeah, well, I mean, the fifteen committee members know. They can tell anybody they want. It was just like any other task force that I was.
But, but it doesn't happen. It's not like it's sitting on the front page of our website, like our open meeting laws require.
Okay.
I mean, if, if, if that was sufficient.
In the genesis of a project, you know as well as I do, you're like, this body was elected to make decisions. And we made a decision and we started to move forward, okay? And there's certain time, like we, we didn't open that decision up to a, to a public forum before we made it. We made it with the best information we had at hand. We're like thirty years with the engineering studies and we moved forward. If we went to a public discussion, we would still be in public discussion. We'd be there for another fifteen years on that one issue alone. And you know I'm telling you to. There's no doubt about it. There is a point where the benefits are from a task force. And you know this is true.
And, and my only comment is we've now gone past that point, in my opinion.
We hadn't even got a site selected. We hadn't even found out if the two sites are, are designable yet. You're just starting to get the OPM. But you, you're allowed your comments, I'm allowed my comments.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
But as I say, there is a point where you, you formalize everything. And there's a point where it's just, you're just better off to keep it informal, to try to form the, form the scenario that you're gonna go to the general public. The general public is going to vote on the issue, but, and I imagine a lot of times they're not nearly gonna be as deeply involved as a task force member and understanding everything. They're gonna rely upon the people that have been in all the meetings to come forward and tell them the truth. And make statements that make sense and explain these issues. Whether it's a formal committee or a task force committee, I don't know which is better. I, I really don't. I, I never, I never considered like a skull and bones committee that town manager had. I just figured it's just, it's the easiest way of doing business at this point. But we know it's gonna be, it's gonna turn formal. It has to turn formal. You get an OPM in there, I mean, that, that's formal. At that point, that thing is fully formal. I mean, you know it as well as I do. That's no longer informal because you fired an OPM to, to run a project.
But yet it's, but it, yet it need not be posted if it's still a task force.
Well, no, I think, I think at that point it automatically would have been, Mark. I mean, it, it doesn't matter. It's not a one we do it as, or not a matter if we do it, it's one we do it. Cause you certainly wouldn't have an OPM dealing with that big of a thing because you're gonna, I think it's a different animal once it hits that point. But that's just my opinion. So you have, you had a motion, you had a second, uh, all in, what is it, make a ten, a select board. So, you have, you had a motion, you had a second, uh, all in, what is it, make a ten, a select board task force?
Right.
All in favor of the, of the select board task force? Two, all opposed? And I'm still on task force scene, so the, it would pass anyway, two, 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 four, and two negative, it passes, right?
No, there's, there's nothing.
I thought it, I thought it favored off.
I mean, did, did you just vote against? I didn't see.
He didn't, he abstained.
No, no, I'm abstaining, I abstained on the other one.
So, it's two, two, one, one?
Yeah, two, one, one. Okay, I'll tell you, we've already put a lot more on the agenda, it was on the agenda tonight. We've had two items, so I'm not gonna schedule the selection of this task force to this point, we'll do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, and actually, I should've stopped these, I should've stopped the discussion going forward, and I didn't, so you should appreciate that. Since it's not on the agenda. Okay, we were in, um.
Town manager's report.
Town manager's report, Stephen, you think you can go through item two?
Uh, yeah, I just, we've, um, I am looking to appoint another task force.
Deja vu.
Deja vu all over again, um, this one, two, this really is kind of, um, an extension, potentially with some new, um, players of a task force that had worked on the initial feasibility study for the council on aging. Um, that's something that the board had, um, asked that I do. Uh, I don't have the names listed here yet, because I have not actually sent out the invitations, and I wanted to give them the courtesy of hearing it through the invitation and not on TV first. Uh, I had been checking on some, quite honestly, some contact information, and, um, you know, I'd asked of, of, uh, several stakeholders, um, including, uh, the COA board chair, and our, the executive director, Amy Sada, and board liaison, Marie Angelidis, um, for some recommendations, which they have provided, so I would guess in the next couple of days that invitation will go out. And once we have, um, commitments from the task force members, we will, um, let the board know who the task force members are, like we did with the DPW task force, um, some months ago. Um, there's no questions on that, um.
Yeah, well, wait, before you go forward, are there any questions on this?
I, I, I'm just, is the, do you anticipate any overlap between the DPW, and it's a serious question, between the DPW task force and the COA task force?
No, two different, they're at different stages, they're different projects at different stages, different, different, um, different mandate, if you will, different mission for the task force, it's just, it's apples and oranges.
Okay.
So, before the town manager wastes his time in setting up these invitations, people he's selected, does anybody on this board have a problem with just being a town manager task force at this point?
Well, my preference would be to have it a select board task force with, you know, open meeting.
You place an emotion on the table?
Um, yes, I would move to make the COA task force a select board task force, subject to the open meeting laws.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Motion failed.
Motion does not pass.
Motion does not pass on two, two tie.
At this point?
Yeah, for now.
Town engineer.
Okay, um, we've made, uh, I, I believe we have an accepted offer of employment to a new town engineer. Um, as of press time for the report, he had not notified his employer, so we did not include his name, but the other relevant information is there. Um, comes to us with largely private sector, in fact, exclusively pri- private sector experience, um, without, at the risk of revealing too many details, he had interviewed for a similar position in another community that someone on our staff had, um, been a part of the cer- that search process, and thought very highly of, of him during that screening. He did not end up getting that job, but had proven himself, um, really a skilled person, and, um, someone who would be a good municipal engineer. So, we kinda went back and forth, um, and he, again, he has accepted the offer of employment. Uh, again, I think it's gonna be good to have a different perspective, some, a non-municipal perspective. Uh, he's done a lot of, um, private development, site engineering, uh, as well as a lot of project management, and those are the kind of things we're really looking for. And so, he should start, again, sometime in early February.
Is, is this, does this person have a, a, a registered engineer?
Uh, they are registered in, in, uh, in Massachusetts, I believe they're registered in Massachusetts, they are registered in, in another state, but they, it's just a filling on a piece of paper to get registered in Massa- I, I do, they, I do believe they have registration in Massachusetts, so.
And do you know mechanical, civil?
It's civil.
Okay, thanks.
I think it was three states, wasn't it?
Could've been three states, yeah. Uh, and maybe Rhode Island, Connecticut, Massachusetts.
If you work somewhere, you were.
Yeah, and like I said, he's, he's been in the engineering field for, um, over twenty years. Um, so, like I said, I think it's, it's, it's a good find. Similarly, you could, um, it's funny that you mentioned this the other night, Mark, uh, we have done a, a minor reorganization in the DPW. Um, we, previously, there were divisions, the facilities, water and sewer, and operations, uh, as well as town, as well as town engineer. And everyone was kind of on the same level. Uh, and what we've, through all the turnover and transition we've been through in the DPW, one of the things that I realized when I was serving as interim director is that the lack of a clearly defined deputy, um, really makes some of the organization of the work and the division of responsibilities inefficient. Uh, and it's for that reason that I, um, decided to create a dep- a true deputy director position and elevate the assistant director for operations, Jeff McAlmond, to that deputy director position. In large part, uh, it, Jeff's wealth of experience and knowledge has made it so every division can benefit from his, from him individually. But you have to create these types of positions based on the organizational structure, not just the person in them. And I do believe, um, clarifying roles, responsibilities, and being able to schedule work that cut, that involves several other divisions is something that, uh, a deputy director has the authority to do without having to, um, you know, seek permission from an, a, 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 a division head that's on the same level. Now, we, we, we haven't had a problem with that certainly since I've been here, we, we're, we're blessed to have, um, you know, great management staff, even the ones that have remained at the DPW, so that type of territorial dispute has never been a problem. But again, if you don't have the right organizational structure, it could. So, this was something that I think, um, like I said, may, well, generate some efficiencies for the department, and, um, really set it on the right track, moving, moving forward through this, like I said, this big transition we've had there.
Stephen, can I ask that, that you provide us a, a organizational chart for what the DPW will look like when this structure is, is in place, I think?
It'll be in the budget document, can you wait that long? In the GFOA budget you get, it'll be in there.
Okay, so, and I, I, I guess, I mean, I'm just trying to let, get a before and after, so we could see how you had people reporting up through this, this thing.
Um, I can do that, I, I, the only reason I hesitate is because I've tried to edit the organizational charts, and I can't do it. So, I've gotta wait for somebody else to produce it, I'm pretty good with Microsoft Word, but I, I made a, a mess of, I think it was a.
No, there's a, there's a template.
Well, a template, yeah, yeah, I, I couldn't, I couldn't make it work, I remember, I spent two hours one night trying to make it, trying to make one change to an organizational chart, and I couldn't do it, so I am having flashbacks of that, but we, we'll figure, we'll get something done. Um, I don't know if there's, I, um, briefly, there's a fiber optic agreement that we've entered into, a one-year agreement, um, for allowing a private business to, um, tap into our fiber optic network over on Shaker Road. It's four, about four hundred dollars a month in revenue, uh, not all that much, but, you know, forty-eight hundred bucks for the year, um, isn't bad. Uh, one of the things that, one of the hurdles I wanted to get past in, in looking at this, working with the IT director, is, um, the private use of what is a taxpayer-funded, um, infrastructure asset. And part, we have our own town-owned fiber optic network, but it also connects to what's called the MBI, the Mass Broadband Initiative. So, when there are areas where we have both, and it's all kind of one, it's tied together as one network. Uh, the Mass Broadband Initiative was a state-funded effort to expand fiber optic networks, especially in Western Mass, they call it the last mile project. Um, we did receive guidance that allowing residents and businesses to access the network, um, was something that, um, was not only allowed, but one of the, one of the purposes for making this significant investment. And I think, on the residential side, it was really intended more for people in rural areas where they don't have any other option for high-speed internet. And Long Meadow were built out with several options, I believe, or at least, at least the cable company is being one. Uh, and plus, we have excellent, well, for the most part, good cell service, there are certainly blank spots in our town, but, um, the commercial use of it is something that MBI did, um, allow for in their development of the network. And the one thing is, uh, you know, four hundred bucks a month is, is fine, seems to me it should be, it should be worth more than that to the business, and, um, or to the vendor who's kind of, um, the middleman on these, on these types of agreements. And the, the vendor that's coordinating this also worked with us on the Bay Path agreement, and has actually done some work, consulting work for the town. And I think is a, a good resource, so in addition to this agreement, over the next year, they've committed to, I think it's in the agreement, that they've made a commitment to work with us to explore ways to, um, generate revenue from our network in a responsible way. So, we'll get that added service, and see if our fiber optic network can be something that is a, a revenue generator going forward. Uh, the agreement does not have an automatic renewal, I, I wanted to make sure that we held ourselves to, um, a one-year timeline to, to keep the pressure on, to make sure we resolve this in a more responsible way, looking, not saying more responsible, but in a more educated way, look, moving forward. Uh, the other consideration I had was, um, you know, a local business needed this, I mean, it's a, it's a bank branch, but, um, you know, the, the facility did need this for their business, and, um, I felt like it was justified supporting that. Um, any questions on that subject?
Um, a couple of things, uh, I would just note that you have Town of East Long Meadow on the agreement, I don't know if you've got that.
It was a scan of the Town of East Long Meadow's agreement that was converted to Word, and it, I had Debbie go through and, and try and reformat it.
Sorry, I mean, I'm just.
Dave Martel looked at it, I've looked at it three times, the IT director looked at it twice, it's just one of those things, nobody looked at the top line, so I apologize for that.
No, I'm just, yeah.
I'm glad the summary at the end was the appendix, 'cause that, I was reading through this thing, and then finally I hit that, and I go, oh, okay, now.
Yeah.
It was so clear.
It actually was a test.
It was a test, see if you read the last part.
So, so the other thing that, I mean, Mark has been talking about for years, and, and I, I've talked to Mark about this, and, you know, this idea of a town Wi-Fi system, I mean, it sounds like a fabulous idea, but it's, it's, you know, I remember when I went for my first MMA conference two years ago, Mark and I discussed it. We talked about it last year's MMA conference, a year ago, we've discussed it at various points along the way, and that's exactly how far we got. And it strikes me that this is sort of like a one-off, um, approach of using the town's fiber optic system as opposed to kind of looking at it in a bigger way. Um, I mean, it, that's kind of what I'd really like to see, and instead of kind of, well, here's one contract. I mean, I, I'd love to look at this in a big way, and, and to see if we could render, uh, you know, services to the whole community, you know, in the way that other towns have done it. Um, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I take it from, you know, all the times that we've, that, at least Mark's talked about it, you know, and it's sort of left there, that, you know, this hasn't really been deemed by you as a, as a great idea, or, or maybe you're just perceiving that the select board as a whole doesn't support it, I don't know, whi- which one, but, I mean, it strikes me that this, this agreement would, would be a good catalyst to really look at this idea in a, in a real sustained way.
I, I kinda thought I covered that in my remarks about taking the year and working with this vendor who's an expert in the field and looking at broader ways to do this.
Well, I, I took it to mean that you were thinking about selling to a few additional businesses, as opposed to, I mean, allowing this one company to tap into it is one thing, I mean, to, to have nodes and to have Wi- I mean, like, you know, wh- what Mark and these, has been talking about, and what other towns have been doing, is, is, is a, is a far more ambitious project. So, I mean, or, or, if, if we're talking about the same thing, great, if not, then, you know.
Yes and no.
Okay, then.
It's somewhat, it's somewhat technical, I mean, we have looked into the wireless network, and when I looked at with the previous IT director, it was not as simple, um, as it, it sounds on its face and requires a significant, especially if you're, if you're going to, like, become an ISP and charge people to access our wireless network, it's, it would be a substantial expansion of our government staff, and it would be, I believe, FCC permitting and all that other stuff. I mean, it's a huge monumental effort, um.
No, that's what I'm talking about, I mean, and, and I'd like to look into that monumental effort.
Okay, wait, one, oh, this is not the point, this is not the.
I mean, setting up a free wireless network.
It's an agenda item, I'll, I'll put it on as agenda, we're not, we're not prepared to discuss this.
But it's in the packet, I mean, this thing's in the packet.
No, but this is a, this is a town manager's report, we're, we're drifting like we did on the other issue. If you'd like it on the agenda, I'll put it on next agenda or the next one, Alex, would you like it there?
We'll, we'll have that, we'll have that discussion as a part, as we work with this vendor, I mean, that was a part of the intent, was to look at other ways.
It's, it's on the next agenda.
That's a waste of an agenda item.
Okay, but it's there, we, we gotta get to this town manager's report, we gotta have a business.
'Cause we're not, we're not ready to report, we're just starting this.
I, I just had a quick con- Stephen, I applaud the initiative, whether we initiated it or somebody came to us for it. It's the right thing to do, it meets so many of our potential criteria, including outside generation of, of, of income for the town, use of assets that we may, may or may not, or, you know, be otherwise using, probably aren't otherwise using at excess capacity. And I think my, my only comment, Alex, is to your, to your comment a little bit, is it, it appears to me to be a departure from our prior IT director who was very protective of anybody else tapping into our, uh, our fiber optic system. Like, you know, I, I hope this is a jumping off point for, for, for far better things.
Okay, Alex, who wants his agenda item, Alex, I hope you'll transmit something to me that, how you want this put on the agenda, so I'll know how you want it, okay?
Gotcha.
Okay. Please continue, Stephen.
Uh, the Converse Street, Converse Street TIP project, um, we are working to develop a right-of-way plan and get the survey completed. As noted, it was a meeting with Mass DOT, uh, we have some work to do on right-of-way acquisitions before the project can be advertised for bid, and we will be doing that, but, um, we did have a productive session with them, and Mass DOT is committed to working with the town to get this project out to bid by September two thousand sixteen. Uh, there's a memo in your packet from the.
Stephen, um, I, I saw in your memo about the Converse project that there were gonna be takings, um, and easements. What, what are the takings going to be?
The takings, and we don't know the specific, um, like, parcels yet, because the survey is not complete. But it would be either takings of permanent easements for a right-of-way, which is what we do now, like, uh, right-of-ways are, are permanent easements, or, um, potentially taking temporary easements for construction staging, or, you know, if we build our, if we build our sidewalks, uh, and we need to be on private land to construct them, um, even though the sidewalks aren't on public land, you may be on private lands. The sidewalks are on public land, but you may, are in the right-of-way, you may be on private land to construct temporary easements to do that. Uh, there'll be, um, the right-of-way plan that we're gonna develop will have the, what's a permanent easement, what's a taking of land, what's a temporary easement. Um, there's probably gonna be a mix of all three. I, I think when, but no, like, whole parcels or homes or anything like that, it's really small slivers of land along the project.
Just for the sidewalk construction?
Sidewalk, maybe some turning radius improvements around curbs, things like that, but not, not like, like I said, not like homes and relocating families, and that's, it's pretty small pieces of land. And that's typical for projects of this size.
All right, I mean, 'cause, I, I guess, um, I had understood this Converse project simply be paving over Converse Street, but I mean, it sounds like it's kind of a bigger project than that.
I mean, it's full-depth reconstruction and, um.
It's full what?
Full, it's not just like a mill and overlay.
Right, I get that part.
They're gonna reconstruct it, they're gonna add sidewalks where there aren't currently, there are sidewalks that are out of code, that are gonna be redeveloped. There'll probably be some, like I said, some, um, radius ta- changes in certain intersections, meaning pulling back the curbs, so trucks can make the turn easier, things like that.
Stephen, if I, if I can just add, when, when I heard, first heard about this six or seven years ago, one of the issues was that when it's a TIP project, they're gonna come in and put in granite curbs and the whole length of Converse Street, and, you know, which is very diff-, so it changes the character of the town, the street a little bit, but it becomes a more formal paved street. And it's that, you know, putting in curbs that may be eight inches or twelve inches or whatever, or maybe a. And it's that, you know, putting in curbs that may be eight inches or twelve inches or whatever, or maybe a, you know, whatever it is wider, that's part of what this is. But all of that i- is, is part of the, the project, right?
I, I don't know if we're, certainly the sidewalks with the ramps, with the um texture for, for um vision impaired.
Truncated domes.
Yeah, truncated domes. There's, there's your materials man right there.
There you go.
Uh, I don't know about the, the granite curving. I mean, they certainly did that on the Coolibrew Pro- Project. Um, again, that's, the, the level of design is not there yet. We need the right-of-way plan before we can finish the design. But it is, the big thing is following federal highway standards for notification and acquisition of real pr- of property. And there's just, the biggest, I mean, the amount of land and easements we're gonna make is relatively small compared to the size of the files we're gonna generate with notification requirements, which is all, I mean, it's for people's protection, but it just is a lot of administrative work, which is why I've asked um town council to kind of um have a paralegal in the firm dedicated to keeping track of the, you know, rec- uh, certified mail return receipts and making sure those requirements have all gone, gone out and um everything's done. And then the things get recorded when they need to be.
And Stephen, like, in, in terms of our recently passed complete streets, this would look at bike lanes and everything.
The TIP projects do that automatically.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they've, the TIP projects have already done that.
Yeah, 'cause it's one of our main thoroughfares, Converse Street. It'd be great if we had bike access.
We have bike access to every street currently.
Just pull them out there. Yeah, it's pretty good now. It would be, you know, nice if it was a, a more recognized bike access.
Okay. Memo on the tennis courts. Uh, I know there's some piles of materials there and it, it's actually, the good weather in that regard's been a blessing. Um, there was an issue with moving a transformer that we had to wait on Eversource for. And then we have to wait for the electrical contractor to come back. The electrical contractor has been um somewhat slow, uh, but they are pretty much the only ones that do it. And we are, to some extent, at their mercy. I know everyone's frustrated by that. I am as well. But I, I do believe we are ninety-five percent of the way there. The materials that are on site will be um spread out and the work done uh by DPW staff. So once the electrical subcontractor has finished their work, it'll be our guys that finish everything out and it'll be all ready for a reopening in spring.
When, when do you anticipate having a final cost, you know, accounting?
Closeout. Project closeout.
Hey, can, can we just, will you provide that for the select board if you? Thanks.
Actually, the uh, the CPA report will have that. Because it's a CPA-funded project, now that I think about it.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's only partially CPA-funded.
Hmm.
Wasn't it all funded CPA?
No.
Majority, I mean, it's easily three-quarters CPA.
Yeah, it was large CPA.
Well, the fir- the first two hundred thousand was town. It's about a quarter.
I think it was one eighty or something like that, but yeah, it's um, yeah.
And then with town appropriated two, twice, and then the CPA twice or three times.
You through, Stephen?
Uh, the last two items are just heads-up items. Just capital playing. We're working on it. IT, MOU, we're working on it.
I'm gonna jump the agenda and go on to the Glenn Meadows legal opinion. Jeff, some back of it. Like, uh, everybody's got some background on this thing, including a legal opinion that came in from Copeland and Page. Real brief history, it's this project started over a year ago when the uh, the Villas approached the town manager with a proposal to take over the maintenance of the roads, take over the snow plowing. And was trash collection in there at that point? Do you remember, Stephen?
I, I believe so. I, I mean.
You wanna come on up, Jeff?
The original request is just accept the public streets.
Yeah, public streets. And then, and, and the thing, and then Stephen had his engineering staff go back and they, they did some research and they found out that the course of streets, uh, the uh setbacks and all were inappropriate. So it, it basically came back and said the streets cannot be accepted because they were actually built in non-compliance with the uh subdivision control law by a request from the, the developer at that time. So basically you had a condominium that they have total control over all the roads, all their structures, uh, all the high fire hydrants inside of there. All the infrastructure belongs to them. Uh, they, they attach to us at the boundary lines. And then the second request or third request and finally got down to the, to the last request was coming in and talking about snow removal and then trash collection. And it finally migrated down to where it's just trash collection. But what you've received was a, uh, an opinion letter from Copeland and Page talking about snow removal and trash collection, generally speaking. What it's done, it's, it's, it's opened up a couple more questions. If you read through the entire, you know, the entire package. The one major point is that we cannot plow snow on any private way in, in our town unless it has been approved at a general election. And was brought forward to, to the town warrant and then put on the general election. Snow removal uh on private ways has its own legislation and commonwealth. And I went back, I chatted with Stephen. I've gone back about, I think, sixty years already on our records, looking. And I cannot find any evidence that it has ever been on the general election. Now, it may have been before sixty years. But the fact is, we do plow some private ways. And as you, if you've noticed in the correspondence from Copeland and Page, they've, they've kind of said that there's some prerequisites that you must do if you're going to do. So in the process of going through this issue, it kind of unfolded another issue that we had that uh, Copeland and Page likely feels we need to get resolution on. But getting back to the current request that came in from the Villas was strictly trash removal. It was put in by their representative attorney, Jeffrey Roberts. And Jeffrey, would you like to, you gave a proposal. Do you have anything you'd like to talk to the board about your proposal?
Uh, well, just very briefly, uh, the, as you say, this started about a year ago. Uh, there were discussions that I was not involved in. Uh, and uh, it has migrated down from acceptance of the streets, basically having a town accepting the streets and doing the snow plowing, do the trash removal, to, I think, a, a mutual recognition that the uh, that the only matter that's uh properly before uh your board is the trash collection. That for a variety of reasons, the issue of accepting the streets and doing tra- uh, doing snow plowing is, is not really reasonable. Uh, however, uh, and even though the trash collection may seem like a, a small thing, uh, and it is in terms of the expense, uh, it's not a small thing to the residents. And uh, in, I've spoken with them about it. We've had a couple of meetings uh, and wanted to have this resolved once and for all, uh, but only with regard to trash. So Chairman Foster said to me, uh, just to make it official as to what exactly you're putting before our board, would you give us something in writing as to what you're looking for? And therefore, that's the letter that you have in front of you, December seventh, dated today, that I uh have provided you. And it's uh, it's not highly scientific. It's, it's really a function of Glenn Meadows relatively unique because it's a condominium, condominium, but the residences are essentially set up almost equivalent to single-family homes. Unlike Emerson Manor, Converse Street, uh, Georgetown is irrelevant because none of the land in Long Meadow, uh, at Georgetown has any buildings on it. So the buildings in Georgetown are all in Springfield. So what they do with the city of Springfield is a, is a separate issue. So there's really no other uh multifamily facility in Long Meadow that has curbside trash collection. Because those facilities really don't have individual units with their own garages and driveways going out to the street. So the Glenn Meadow people put out their trash like everybody else. Uh, it's just that they don't get the benefit of the, of the town trash collection contract. Uh, and uh, the people there frankly feel that uh they're substantial contributors to the tax base of the town. And if there's something the town can include them in, uh, it should. And the fact that they're a, uh, their own condominium organization that controls their own streets and pays for their own roads, uh, really, I don't, we don't think really has much to do with trash pickup any more than it has to do with, the fire department comes if there's a fire and the police department comes if, if there's a crime or a problem. Uh, these are just town services and there's, uh, would seem to be no precedent-setting issue here and no reason why the town trash people can't drive through there and pick up trash like they do for every other street and residents in town. So uh, I think in, in our pri- in the prior discussions, uh, there was a recommendation, I think, from, I, I think it was from the town engineer that uh, that there would be an expense and the estimated expense would be about sixty-one hundred dollars for a year's worth of trash pickup. And uh, and that would be an expense of the town. Uh, and uh, considering that that's the only town service they would get uh at Glenn Meadow, it doesn't seem like a high hurdle for the town to approve. So the request is that uh, the board allow the trash to be picked up. And I, I don't believe there's any, unless Copeland and Page says otherwise, I don't believe there's any statutory or regulatory requirement that says it can't be done. So that's really what the request is all about.
Okay, then, go ahead, Mark.
Attorney Roberts, thanks for coming in. I, I'm just wondering if, if you were the, the attorney of record at the time that the, the uh approval was passed the town meeting to put in the, the Glenn Meadow development.
No, I had nothing to do with it.
The town meeting at the time, it, it, there was a discussion, and if I recall correctly, and in fact, we got an email today from a town resident who reminded us of the discussion was that the, the quid pro quo for agreeing to put in this higher density population was that there would be no town services requests. Uh, and, and so the, the, my concern is that we've got a, a lack of institutional memory perhaps that, that comes back and says, well, we changed our mind. Now we're trying to put in the request. And to me, that's somewhat problematic. More problematic for me, though, having been on the trash hauling contract negotiation team, is that this is like uh six months past when it could've, could've happened pretty easily. I think that, you know, we just went through and completed a five-year trash hauling contract discussion. Uh, I don't know where the sixty-one hundred dollars came from, if we talked to the vendor about it. You know, it, it does reopen that contract. Uh, that's a hauling number perhaps. It doesn't include a tipping, dumping number. So I, you know, I, before I could see us approving it, we'd have to go back to our vendor. And, and my understanding is, it's the same vendor that, that the Villas at, at Glenn Meadow use now. And, and, you know, I know I'm on an open meeting, but it seemed very strange for them to come back and say, yeah, we're willing to lose money by combining these and letting the town do it, do it pretty cheaply because they have no obligation under our contract to reopen the contract to extend it to different roads. Our current contract lists all the roads in town that, that they have to pick up from. You know, and, and as I said, you know, had we done this six months ago, which was July first start, I would've said, sure, let's see what the difference is by including this. And if the difference is some small amount of money, we could do that. We also need to look at, again, it's not just that, but there's a, a fuel escalator on top of it and there's also the tipping fees. And, and those aren't included here. So I think there's a lot more data that needs to be gathered before we could even consider this. And that goes beyond my initial comments that this is a, this is a departure from the original agreement that everybody who bought into Glenn Meadows, maybe, maybe not the current residents, but certainly the original residents and certainly established by the contractor, that it would not be any request for town services.
Uh, I guess, I guess my comment in the order of your presentation is that if Glenn Meadow was built out over twenty years ago, uh, there were, other than the Converse Street School conversion, I don't think there were any, Emerson Manor was a, was a different kind of a, a project, subsidized housing. When, I, I guess you probably remember when Glenn Meadow was, was done. I remember it. I wasn't involved professionally. But I also remember that that entire strip of property that involves the, the uh, the, the part, the big house and the Villas running all the way down that side of Converse Street was a very, very controversial project because the developer, who's, I think you also might have something to do with, with your prior discussion about Grand Meadows, the developer wanted to create a subdivision in there with lots of streets and lots of single-family homes. And the hue and cry at that time was, we can't afford to be, keep building schools for all the people who are gonna occupy those homes and send their kids to our public schools. And it'll, it's just, it'll kill us. So the, the movement was, no, we don't want something like that there. His response then was to say, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna apply for Section Eight housing. And that's what I'm gonna do, unless you do what I ask you to do. And it was a big controversy. In the end, uh, the O'Connell people came in and they came in with this project. So it was still controversial because in those days, I mean, the idea that you were gonna have a condominium was, was unheard of. And I think if you look back on it after twenty years or twenty-five years, however long it took between when it started and now, most people said, would say, those Villas are the greatest deal we have in town. You've got all those places, taxes equivalent to single-family homes. There's not one child in school. There's not one service provided. This is a great deal. And a lot, the people who move into them are largely from Long Meadow. So I, I think that there's been a huge shift in the whole perception of what, what this facility is. I think there's a much greater appreciation for it than was ever conceived twenty-five years ago. Uh, I don't know, when you talk about it was represented, this was represented, that was represented, another thing was represented. I mean, I don't know. Was it in writing somewhere that they're prohibited to receive any town services? I kind of doubt it. It might've been commented, you know, at some meeting somewhere. I think generally it's been the case. Uh, this is a small thing. I, I, I will, I, I can't disagree with you on your comments about a trash contract, 'cause I don't know. I think your point is well-taken. If there's a, if there's a five-year agreement in place and it's locked in for five years, then I guess there has to be some discussion about what exactly it would take to do it. I don't think either of us should pre, you know, pre, predict what the answer is. Uh, but I agree with you. If this was a, if this was a trash compact that started anew, brand new, every January one, it'd be a lot easier to identify.
Absolutely.
Uh, on that basis, I, 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 I think, you know, we'd like to, to, like you to consider it. And if that's what it takes and you need some more data, then, then I think we should get the data. 'Cause I, 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 I agree with you. You have to know what you're doing. I didn't, in, in reading these prior correspondences, I didn't see that kind of a reference, so I, I'm just a little surprised by that.
You know, the, this trash contract isn't, I mean, it comes up every five years and it's kind of an internal thing to the town because most people just want their trash picked up.
Oh, I know. I, I, I mean, I, when I was on your board, they were talking about this. So I, I know it's, the trash thing is, is, it can get confusing. But I, I, you know, I, I understand that.
So um, in your letter, from what you were just saying, you were talking about precedent. And you made reference, I think, to two projects or two condo associations, Emerson Manor and Converse School. Okay, was there another one or was, were those the two that you were comparing it to?
Uh, I, uh, well, there's a, there's another multifamily complex which is over at the Jewish nursing home.
Right, okay.
And we, and we looked at all of those sites. And none of them have, they're all, they're all, their trash is dumpsters. It's private dumpster.
So that's my, so, okay, so I understand the distinction you're saying, well, this isn't a precedent because they don't have curbside.
Right.
Uh, trash collection. And I guess I'm not quite, I understand the factual distinction. I'm not sure what the import of that distinction is. I mean, and maybe you could illuminate it for, I mean, you know, I'm not sure what would prevent them from asking, say, well, you know, we pick it up in dumpsters. It's actually easier. Right? I mean, it's more efficient to, to collect it from a dumpster. I don't know. I'm just guessing that's probably the case or... So, so could you elaborate on that a little bit to explain why that distinction matters?
Yeah, because I think we're trying to fold into the. Yeah, because I think we're trying to fold into the, the existing curbside trash pickup that's provided to residences. Not to facilities, I don't know if your trash contract with the hauler now involves them. Doing these dumpster collections.
For the municipal buildings, it does.
Okay, it does.
There's a component of dumpsters as well as a component, a majority of the component is, is curbside pickup.
My, my, my guess is that if you tried to say, if, if you, I mean, we're not asking for that. If somebody asks for that and says, well, you're doing this over at the villas, I mean, you, the answer is no, we're not doing that at the villas. And my guess is that kind of dumpster collection is a different, is a different ballgame.
And then, I guess the, the, the comment that I have, I guess it kind of echoes what Mark was just saying about the precedent and having just gone through the debate over. The shops, you know, there were certain representations made at that time, um, to get it approved. Your, your point about it being a writing, it kind of takes me back to the point where I asked, uh, the, the. The guy in charge of the shops.
Which shops?
Steve Walker.
Steve Walker, I asked Steve Walker.
I gotta talk about that again?
Well, no, I, no, but it kinda has to do with the promises, you know, and, uh, so one of the questions I had was, are you, are you going to put in writing? That we're gonna have the farmer's market and he said it orally and everybody kinda took it to be an affirmation that we will indeed have the farmer's market. And, uh, I kind of was looking ahead to the point, to the question you would ask, you know, if a few years later they say. Well, it's, it doesn't work for us anymore, it's not in writing, um, so I guess what it tells me is that we ought to honor the things that are. You know, the basis of acceptance at town meetings, um, you know, I mean, I think, you know, cause, cause we want people to. Be able to rely upon those representations, um, so, you know, that, that does give me some pause. So, that's my comment on that point.
I, I guess, I guess on that basis, I just referred to the fact that, uh. It was a long time ago that this thing was at a town meeting, I don't, frankly, don't remember that discussion, but it was a long time ago. And I, in my, my, my would guess that the, 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 the primary issue. At that time was, are we gonna have to take responsibility for your roads, all your infrastructure, et cetera, and the answer would be, no. You're, and we're gonna, we're not gonna require any town services, I mean, you buy your water and of course, they are getting town services because they get. Public safety protection, so it's, I, I think it's, I think that's a. A, a, a long way to look back and say, well, this is the reason, I mean, I think if there's a reason not to do it. I would think would probably be a better reason than that.
I just was wondering, what is the, what's the current cost, do you know what the current, what you currently pay for trash removal? I mean, does each individual person pay a certain amount or is it, uh?
How do they do it now?
The association pays, right?
Association pays.
They did like eight thousand dollars a year or something, seventy-five hundred dollars a year?
We budget eight to eighty-five hundred.
Okay.
Okay, so the, uh, alright, and this would be six thousand, so this would save a couple thousand dollars.
We don't know that.
We don't know, we don't know the.
Yeah, you don't know.
It, well, based on what's on paper.
That was the old contract though, Tom.
So we'd only have to, we'd have to look at that.
That was the old hauling contract that doesn't, that doesn't include tipping fees.
We don't know what it includes.
Right, we, well, it was, right, we, right, right, we have no idea, very good, you're right, we have no idea with that.
I'm just trying to get a ballpark figure about what the difference is.
I guess if it's the same hauler, at least they're gonna know what the loads are.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. If you ask them.
Yes, Ian.
Sure.
For me, um, you know, we, I've spent a lot of time on this issue and I sympathize with the folks at, uh, at the villas, um. You know, I think, to me though, in, in couple minute pages of opinion does go into the condo documents that we sent them. I can appreciate that, um, the condo development is fully built out. And the cost to receive these, to provide these services or the cost to purchase these services, snowplow. Trash, you know, maintenance of the common areas, which the driveways and roads there are technically common areas, not, not even private ways under the letter of the law. I get, I can appreciate the fact that they're built out and the cost to get these services goes up every year, so their association fees goes up every year. It's a microcosm for our own community. And it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a parallel that occurred to me recently that they're, they're like us, they're like the town and, um. I, I don't support this, uh, and, and the reason why is not that I don't wanna try and help the folks at the villas. Uh, in fact, I had offered to work with them on perhaps talking to the same hauler on. Talking about their rate without taking on the burden, but to me, there is, there are two clarifying points that, um, stick in my head, the first is. Um, the cost, whatever the number is, the cost is gonna go up for the fifty-eight other, hundred other households in the town of Long Meadow. Simply because, uh, an obligation that they incurred as a condition of their purchase, they don't wanna keep it incurring. And that, this doesn't seem fair to the other help, to the other property owners in the community, they made a choice to buy here with these costs known to them. Um, and their obligations known to them, the second part is when we initially met with this and, and Attorney Roberts who, um. I have great respect for, I've seen his work at the planning board and he certainly knows his stuff, he was not the attorney at the time, um, but when we met with them. And their property manager, I had asked some questions about how they procure their services, what are they doing for cost controls, how would they look at. Changing their scopes of work, things that I would do as town manager to reduce our costs. And at the time, there was an expressed unwillingness to do any of that, it was just really let the town take it over. Cause we pay taxes, which they do, but they pay taxes on property that does not include these services and never has. And so there's that, that fundamental issue of fairness for asking residents now of the other households to absorb the cost. There's the issue of, um, I don't believe the, either the association or the management company. You know, looking at different ways to do that or if they have, they haven't communicated to me and I've offered to help participate, facilitate that discussion. And then the third thing is when I, you know, it, I get kind of mixed messages from the villas about whether they want us to take this stuff over or not. And I just, I just don't believe it, like I said, I don't believe that it's, uh, in, in the best interests of the, um, of the town operations.
Stephen, just if, if we, so if in five years from now, they approach us again, um. What do you think the chances of us getting a better deal, I mean, is it to town's advantage having a larger footprint of collection? I mean, do they give us, would they, could we negotiate a lower rate?
It's definitely, no, it's definitely, it's definitely a higher cost on the hauling. And there really, I mean, there's no, there's no advantage because if they were a non, if they were a tax-exempt entity. And so they were pa- they weren't paying property taxes, but they said, we'll give you, we'll give you the sixty-one hundred a year to do our trash. And kind of, you know, cause it's gonna be cheaper than us doing on a contract basis, that would be an advantage or at least a break-even proposition and I would be a hundred percent for that. They already pay taxes. And so there's no finding, there's no offsetting revenue, just like there's no offsetting revenue for the association for increasing costs, there's no offsetting revenue for us to absorb the cost of doing the service. And, you know, to me, it's, like I said, I, I sympathize with them, I, I understand the pressure they're under, cause that's what we're, we've spent a lot of time talking about. The same pressure facing this community, um, but the same, but the same problems we have, they have as well and it just. Um, I just, like I said, I think it's a, it's a, to me, there is a fundamental fairness issue, um, because this was a known. Issue when everyone there purchased those units.
Well.
Uh, you can come up with Attorney Roberts.
Uh, my name's Ted Fleming, I'm the treasurer over there and we do ring out our budget, we really do. And we work with the management company to ring it out even farther and so our numbers, I'm not here to cry. I'm just saying that our numbers are on the ball and, uh. I just wanted to correct you on that, that we do ring out our numbers and, and just to double-check this. We hire a management company, Plotkin, to work with us on anything, we go out to bid on everything we can bid.
Yeah, I, I, and I wasn't suggesting that, that you were being financially irresponsible, it's just when I asked questions about that, it, it wasn't really, uh. We didn't really get engaged in that conversation.
Well, that was then and this is now, I think is what I'd say, cause I, I, I wasn't involved with that and, and I, I don't wanna, I mean, those discussions are irrelevant at this point. A couple of your points, you keep coming back to, this was the deal, this was the deal, this was the deal and, 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 uh, you know. Fundamental fairness to the residents of the town, you said there are fifty-eight hundred houses in the town? If you divide that by seventy-five hundred dollars, if that's what it costs, that's a dollar twenty-nine a house a year. So the, the fairness that, that we look at is. When you go and assess one of those units, you're not saying, you know, this has to do with, uh, these people, these units that are getting, who are sending their kids to school, they're doing this, they're doing that. We're doing all these other things, it is a really fantastic deal for the town to have those places over there. And, uh, and, and they're just saying, can you help us out a little bit? That's all, that's what it comes down to, now you could say no because, you know, twenty-five years ago, somebody said, oh, we're not gonna get any services from the town. Uh, it, it's, it's really, it's really just part of, we're all residents of the same town, you wanna have a good facility over there. You wanna have people feel like they're getting some value living there, so they'll go and live there and they'll pay for those places and try and keep the tax base up. It's, it's, uh, it's a community, uh, they, the people over there contribute, they go to town meetings, they give money to. You know, various causes and do other things and, and they're saying, gee whiz, you know, we, we're, you know, we, we gotta deal with these issues and we'd like a little consideration. I, I, I can remember when, uh, you know, you talk about all kinds of services in the town and people would say, well, why are we paying for that? We don't have kids in school, why are we paying for that or, uh, you know, I don't, I mean, back when we had leaf pickup, I, I, I don't need to pick up those people's leaves. And other people say, we're, we're elderly people, we don't have any kids in school, we don't use the playgrounds, pick up our leaves for us if you can. It's just, you know, we're all participating, it's kind of spreading out, uh, the experience and, uh. You know, it's, it's, it's accepted that the snow plowing doesn't work, those are not gonna become public streets. The snow plowing doesn't work for other reasons other than the one you got from Copeland and Page, uh, that wasn't why that was pulled off. But this seemed to be a reasonable thing to do and it's, uh, if it's not done, it doesn't mean everybody's gonna move away. But if it is done, it means that everybody's gonna feel like, hey, the town's coming about for us a little bit and. You know, I bet if you went to fifty-eight hundred houses and said, you're gonna spend a dollar thirty extra in your taxes next year because. We're sending the trash guys over there to the villas, you know, they'd probably say, why are you bothering to ask me the question, it's kinda crazy. It's, it's, uh, I'm not gonna belittle the fact you have to pay attention to where your money's going. I just heard you say you're getting four hundred dollars a month from somebody from a bank that's tapping into your fiber optics line, I mean, it's. There are dollars floating around that could easily be used for this, uh, agreed once you know what they are. And, uh, you know, it doesn't have to be something that says we're gonna do this for the next fifty years, I mean, if it. If it, if it goes in and it works, it can work, if it doesn't work, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be done again. It's just, uh, it's just that we think we oughta, you oughta really pay serious attention to it, we actually think we ought to approve it.
Well, just a question, so, but they, these residents have the right to come to town meeting and make a proposal to put this forward, right? I mean, you know, and, and I think that that may be something else you wanna look into and see if, you know, because that seems. You know, that kind of argument at a town meeting might go over, you know, it's a dollar thirty, you know, and if people say, yeah, let's just do this, let's, you know, embrace this idea, um.
Well, I suppose, I suppose, I, I don't know if a, if a town meeting can, can order that kind of thing to be done, I'm not sure.
For the budget.
Well, we've had. Yeah, budget item?
Citizen's petition for a budget.
Like we've had issues come up, uh, like, uh, you know, uh, chlorine in the water.
Citizen's petition.
What's the other, the, what's, what was the water one that always came up?
Any, any citizen's petition could be heard.
Fluoride, fluoride in the water and it came up year after year after year and I mean, it, it's, uh, you know, just another option.
That was a petition not to fluoride, right?
Right.
Yeah, to take, to remove fluoride, yeah, yeah, but.
Uh, well, obviously a citizen's petition and going to a town meeting is a much bigger deal, uh, if, if, I mean, if you say no. Obviously, they can do it, you could say, we'll put it on the warrant for you and you don't want to get signatures. Uh, you know, that, we just, there's, we're going here because this is where it started a year ago, that's really why we're here.
The Attorney Roberts is an ex-selective.
Oh, okay, he knows, alright.
You used to be over here.
You know, it, I mean, despite my hesitancy about this, I, I, I think this is worth getting a little better information. Um, to figure out exactly what the cost would be, um, and to me, that would be the way to really give us a fair hearing.
Any other comments?
I, I agree.
I haven't commented yet, um, I go back to what the attorney actually did say, he said, unlike snow clearing, there's no. It's my opinion, there's no similar statutes covering trash collection, he's absolutely correct, snow, snow removal has its own statute, it's a very unique thing within the Commonwealth. Reference to the, and of course, Stephen and I have chatted about this many times, it depends on which side you put your hat on, it depends on which side. The bed you get out of on the morning when you look at the condo association is paying, and I don't know if the, the general public's aware, but there's twenty-nine units, is that correct?
Thirty-nine.
Excuse me, thirty-nine, I thought it was twenty-nine, there's thirty-nine units and they pay individual taxes, just like every home in our community. And they pay fairly significant taxes, in addition to that, and it was part of their condo association, they pay fees to maintain their community. Which does include trash collection, road maintenance, service maintenance and all the other costs associated with the development over there. Uh, and as I say, they, they were asking, it's twenty-some years later, they were asking for some assistance and. We've gone through the list and said, we can't do that, can't do that, can't do that, and it's finally got down to the, the, of the one item that looks like it is available without any restrictions. Without any passing laws, it'd be trash collection, in reference to our five-year contract, I, you know, I say that tongue-in-cheek. I would hope that our contract is written in such a fashion that it's expandable for thirty-nine cans of trash over a five-year period. If it's not, then we likely missed the boat on a clause that we needed in there because what if we build, what if we develop Turner Park? In the next five years and we have trash, what are we gonna do, go back and renegotiate, so it's just a point, I mean, we're talking thirty-nine cans. Uh, I agree with what Mr. Grant said, uh, I would like to personally know, do we collect trash on any private ways in our community now? We know we're doing some snow removal, do we collect trash on private ways? I know Stephen said it's not a private way, well, I don't think anybody said it really is not, they, it's not legally defined not as a private way. Except they didn't say they.
I think it's a way shown on a plan.
Right.
You know, for real estate purposes, it's private.
But not for the benefit of the public, there are private ways that are for the benefit of the public, like West Road or Dunn Road. Where people go down there and access the waterfront or the leaf dump or something like that, this is not.
But they weren't designed, they weren't designed for that purpose though.
But Copeland and Page was clear about why, about the difference on that one.
Oh, I, you say they're clear, I don't think they're that clear, but anyway, like, we've read, and I agree with their opinion, I've read every, every aspect of their opinion. But the Dunn Road was not designed as a road to the dump or to the leaf pile. That's, that's, that assumption's wrong, they've become necessities after the fact.
But they've become available for the public good.
Right, well, any road in this town that you can drive a vehicle on without a gate is there for public good. Now, I could see, for instance, I'll give you, and I don't, I don't even wanna get in the argument, but no, I won't, I won't go there, but I can see. I can see at times when there's a possibility that traffic could be detoured right through that community because of a major happening on the road out in front of it. Right now, and a major accident takes place, that traffic could go right down to that community on police order, so then it becomes a public way. So I think we could talk about this all night and all day on whether the status of the road, but that's not what you're wanting anymore, you didn't ask for the road to be accepted. But either, we are providing some services in the town, so I would like to know, like Alex says, more information, like to know what the actual cost is, this is, this came in from Mike. And I'd like to know, uh, what private ways. And I'd like to know, uh, what private ways, that are still under private, private ways, are we collecting trash on? If any, in our community. It's not the same, I mean, you keep saying that, it's not the same thing. Well, I'd just like to know what private ways, because they are private roads, that we're collecting trash on. And it, we don't need to count, just how many of them out there are we doing? And, is the adjunct issue on this, which I think is gonna have to come forward, it depends on what the board wants to do about it. I, in the process of this correspondence, at least it's become evident to me that we may, in fact, not be legal in the execution of snow removal duties on private ways in this town. And that if we're not, as it was recommended in this attorney's opinion, we should get it cleared, we should get it straightened out.
I agree, I mean, we should identify where that's happening.
I went back fifty, sixty years, but then, Stephen, I guess, I don't know how many years would you go back and check before you would say it never took place? So, I don't know how many years you go back. I mean, I-
I don't know, sixty sounds pretty good to me.
Yeah, I went sixty some, I didn't see it, 'cause it has to be on the general election.
Right.
It actually, actually, 'cause we don't have the authority to plow any snow on private ways unless it is given to us by a town election vote.
Alex, I, I wouldn't limit it to sixty, I mean, some of these private ways, so-called, have been around for eighty or ninety ye- ninety years and more.
Hundred years.
Hundred years, and, and, so, who's to say when it was approved and how it was, you know?
But to spend all the time looking at that, that's not what we're talking about here, Richard.
No, it's a second issue. I disagree with that.
It's not even an issue related to this. It's an issue in the- It's an issue that I think you relayed, but-
No, it's an issue that Copeland and Page-
But they make it clear that this doesn't apply to here.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think, I don't, I don't agree with that. Whether it's a public way, uh, I mean, whether it's a private way, or whether it's a private road that's not a private way, like, open to the public. The point is, unless it's a public way, the town doesn't have to spend a nickel maintaining the roads, isn't that true? They don't have to resurface them, they don't have to boot, put the sewers in, they don't have to plow the snow, they don't have to do anything. That's the same as this place. So, whether this is a private way open to the public, or whether this is a private way that is open to the public, the point's the same. You've got a street that somebody lives on, that the town is not required to provide any services to. You don't have to pick up trash in front of those houses either. That's Mr. Foster's comment. It, it's, you know, to say that, well, this isn't this kind of a private way, it's that kind of a public way, my point is, it's not a public way. And, any other street that's not a public way, it just isn't a public way. It could be fifteen different varieties of ways, but it's not a public way. And, I, so I think it's a legitimate question. If you're going on the streets that you don't have to maintain at all, you have no legal responsibility for, and you're plowing snow and you're picking up trash, now what's the difference? And we're not getting into plowing snow, but it's the same issue, I think. It's a residence on a street that the town isn't, doesn't have to maintain.
Well, even in the plow, uh, snow plowing, once the authority is given to the select board, they can refuse areas to plow snow in.
I think so.
They can get into the budgetary process and say, we can't do it, but it's, but they can't do anything until they've been given that authorization.
I don't even think you can put, you know, I don't think the electric company could, could put streetlights on those streets, unless they're a public way.
Yeah, I, I don't know on that one, I, I really don't.
I mean, they can't do it within the town electricity contract.
But I know, just got into Copeland and Page's review, and it, and it, their review is exactly the same as, I think, the same as your officer brought up too, Stephen, when he, when he wrote his report, and it's the same as what I found out, it's a very unique thing.
I mean, if you're trying to find ways not to do this, there, there are ways not to do it. I mean, you can pick and choose all the different ways, you can say, we can't do it. I'm just saying to you, look for a way to see if you can do it, that's what they're asking. And, and, and I don't think, I mean, our position is, that when you go through all the rules and everything else, you know, if you say, well, it's too much money, uh, or, you know, we just don't wanna do it because we think residents might yell and scream about it, that's one thing. There's nothing science about it, that's just an opinion you're entitled to make. But I think all these little distinctions between this kinda way, or that kinda way, are, are missing the point. Now, there are people on a street, it's not a, not a town, fully serviced street, that just want those town trucks to come in there and pick up their stuff.
Again, I'm gonna reiterate, my point was that we have a contract for picking up trash, it names streets. I don't know if they're private ways, public, it doesn't matter, it names streets.
Right.
To add to that, Richard, to your point, if we built houses on a new development somewhere else, we must reopen the entire contract.
Good.
Okay, so, this, you know, the, the vendor has the right to open the entire contract and renegotiate a contract we just negotiated, if, if we, and, and we can request that he do that.
Yeah, I mean-
But we may request that not, we don't wanna do that.
I agree.
We got a heck of a good deal, but, and, that's my only point, is that this probably would open an entire contract to add the street, which not means that the vendor could say, yeah, it may only cost us this amount of money, but we wanna charge it forty thousand dollars more, or whatever they wanna say.
Yeah, obviously, yeah.
It's their, their right to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, you're right, I, I don't disagree with you.
So, that, that was my point from day, from the beginning of this thing.
I think it's a good point.
And, and, and Jeff, if we had done this eight months ago, you know, I mean, we were very comfortable saying to the vendor, do all this, and oh, by the way, will you throw in this and throw, you know, throw in Glenn Meadow, can, you know, when you're negotiating, you can do a lot of things.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
You can't do now, and four years from now, we, we might wanna do that on, on Glenn Meadow's behalf, or, or give them a better price, or whatever it is, but we're not there now. That's my only point.
I just have a question, um, why don't you guys have dumpster service? To Alex's point, I don't think it makes a difference in terms of setting a precedent. Uh, I do believe it makes a difference in terms of cost, and I'm just interested to hear why you guys don't have dumpster service.
The places have dumpsters, uh, the people, you know, are on the second floor, like, the, the, the big house over there, that has dumpsters, because it's like an apartment building. Emerson Manor is like an apartment building. Uh, I'm not sure what's going on over at Georgetown, although somebody told me the city picks up their stuff, but that's irrelevant. If, if, if you were doing dumpsters, how would Mr. Fleming, who lives in this condo, get his trash all the way down to where the dumpster is? That's the problem.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't want it, to answer your question.
Who's they?
The owners wouldn't want it any more than you'd want it in your backyard. I don't think any one of them would want a dumpster anywhere near their units. I'm just speaking, for the owners, that's all.
I mean, the reason I ask is I, I do believe it's probably much less costly to tip a dumpster than just to do curbside.
You have to get the trash to the dumpster.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I understand, but this, you know, I, I think, 'cause the point is, again, to me, there's sort of a, a principal threshold, regardless of cost, as to whether or not it's the fair thing to do, and you can, I mean, it's, it's, it's an artful term to say, what's it worth per house, but if, if the amount was thirty thousand dollars, you know, is it gonna be, how much, how much do we feel like we wanna spend on this, or is it the right thing to do from a public policy standpoint? I mean, you, you, you can reverse the argument.
Yes, you can, but it's not thirty thousand dollars, so that's not the argument.
But that's not to say that as costs grow.
But we have, we have a lot of elderly over there that, uh, we, I, I know a number that wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, what we're gonna do, Jeff, uh, we, we have one board member that's not here tonight, so, we made the presentation, and we're gonna hold any action till our next meeting.
Look into that, yeah.
Give us time to look into some of the stuff that's been brought up, and let it settle in a bit, and maybe some more questions come up.
Yep, yep.
And then we'll put it on the next agenda.
I mean, it's, it's, uh, actually, it's curious, the point you brought up is what, I wonder what the, what if, you know, you, people are building houses in town, not very often, but, you know, one year to the next, there may be five or six more houses, there must be something-
We've got streets named, not numbers of houses.
Oh, streets, I-
So, but if we created a new street, Jeff, yeah, we'd be concerned.
Yeah, that makes sense.
No, there's two parts to the contract, Mark's right, there's a street map, and then there's a provision that says, any changes must be negotiated.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I actually printed that out before.
I mean, if, you know, yeah, so if, uh, you know, like, when Eaton Drive, or whatever it is here, went in, you know, up, up on, uh, off of, off of William Street down there, you know, it was on the list, and it didn't say, it's got three houses and it's gonna have eight house, it just, the street's on the list.
Yeah, I got it, yeah, that makes sense, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for, uh, thanks for your attention.
Thank you all for listening, and thank you all for your consideration.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephen.
Okay.
Richard, how about if we move to, uh-
Thank you.
Liquor licenses.
Yeah, let's go to liquor licenses, you got them ready?
Hey, Debbie, you ready?
I'm ready, okay.
We're gonna go to liquor licenses, I, we approve the renewal of the liquor license for Andre and Andre, Inc., doing businesses, Four Seasons Wine and Liquors.
Hey, can I, uh, I'll second for personal discussion. Remember we went through this last, is there any reason why we can't do this, uh, together? As opposed to license by license? I mean, I think last year, Paul objected, and I think that, that was the reason why we didn't-
You wanna do them as one?
I have no objections to do them as a group.
But I'd like to state them individually, as opposed to-
That's fine, yeah, that, so, do you wanna amend your motion?
I'll amend, I'll amend my motion, Jeff.
I have no objections to doing them as a group.
Read them off, Mr. Gold.
Move, we approve the liquor licenses renewal for. Andre and Andre Incorporated, doing businesses, Four Seasons Wine and Liquors. Bottle and Brew Inc., doing businesses, Long Meadow Package Store. The Bottle Shop, Inc., doing businesses, The Bottle Shop. Bertucci's Restaurant Corporation, has a restaurant club license for Bertucci's Brick Oven Restaurant. Clubhouse Cafe LLC, doing businesses, Franconia Country Club. Spartanou, Inc., doing businesses, Grapevine Pizzeria and Restaurant. United Food Supply Company, Inc., doing businesses, Hukilau Restaurant. LHC Restaurant Corporation, doing businesses, Iron Chef Asian Cuisine. Lee Guang Brothers, Inc., doing businesses, Lee Brothers Inn. Long Meadow Country Club, on four hundred Shaker Road. Max Burger, Long Meadow, LLC. Rinaldi's Italian Specialties, Inc. Wool Swamp Enterprises, LLC, doing businesses, Twin Hills Country Club. And Fuji Mountain Asian Bistro, LLC, doing businesses, Umi Asian Bistro.
Do you have a second?
I'll second, sure.
Any discussion on the licenses? Seeing those question, all in favor?
Oh, all right.
You have a discussion?
Well, I just had one.
Okay.
It's kinda, I just was gonna say, uh, you know, that, um, just to, the town manager, that there's, there's no unresolved complaints about any of these places that are applying for-
None that we're aware of.
Right, so, that's, yeah, that was my awareness.
Except, except the prices are too high.
Although, we may not be aware of it, based on them being state A, B, C, C, 'cause sometimes they don't tell us. Is, is, is the fine, fine, uh, fine print.
The fine print.
Sometimes the L, A, A, B, C, C doesn't tell us.
Well, as a license commission, license issues are brought here, and so, if there's nothing pending before you, generally, then it's safe to assume that there's nothing pending. Uh, and if there is, you can revoke the licenses just with a hearing, and then a, a subsequent meeting.
All right, so everyone's in good standing, and so, that, so, no, no conflict.
With the town, as Mark said, we don't know if they're in good standing, the A, B, C, C or not, but-
Right, yeah.
None, none that I've noticed.
All right.
All in favor? All opposed? Man, look.
Richard, can I move that we approve the minutes of the September eighteenth, two thousand fifteen joint school committee select board meeting with a, a single correction?
Mm-hmm.
And that is somewhere down in, in the body of this thing, which I couldn't change, because it's a, it's an Adobe, it, it actually has the word hire in there twice. It, it, it actually says, Debbie, uh, hire, try, comma, try to hire, and it really only needs to say, hi, try to hire. You'll find it eventually, you'll find it somewhere.
Do you have a second on that? What date, Mark, is that?
It was the September eighteenth joint meeting.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, so we got a second on the motion, so we're in discussion, so he's doing his discussion part.
No, my, my motion was as, as, with that correction.
Okay.
I don't have any other comments.
Any other comments on the main minutes?
And this is September, the joint meeting?
Eight, okay, yeah.
September eighteenth.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? September eighteen.
I second it.
Okay, and I abstained, 'cause I was not there.
Oh, okay.
All right, I'll move, we approve the minutes of this November sixteenth, two thousand fifteen regular meeting as presented. Uh, is it the fifteenth or the sixteenth? Sixteen, sixteen.
Yeah, I don't know, there's a small, a minor difference, just-
Give me a second, Chris.
I don't know, I'll second it.
Okay.
Under announcements, announcement number three, it should be, uh, high school boys cross-country, um, it shouldn't be winners, it should be, uh, state qualifiers. That's all. That's the end of my comments, are the else's in order?
Okay, all in favor? All opposed?
Move, we approve the December second, two thousand fifteen special meeting minutes, I have a correction.
Wait, is this December second?
December second, I'm sorry, what did I say, I'm sorry, December second.
But I have a couple of corrections.
All right, I'll second it.
Yeah, my, my only comment was the, the goals weren't voted upon, and I don't know if it oughta, it oughta indicate that these were not, these were proposals and not agreed upon, voted upon goals.
I agree with that.
Right, it weren't.
Yeah, just add a sentence, these, these goals were proposed and not yet voted upon.
And then, you, you have anything else, Mark?
Nope, that's it.
So, the two changes, I would say, is, under goal two, um, there's a place where it says, Mr. Grant suggested setting a policy to keep future select boards from spending mon, spending funds that are set aside for specific things. I didn't say that, I believe, Richard, you said that, um, I mean, I, I mean, I know I didn't say it, so-
Yeah, and it could, there's really not any real value to it anyway, it was-
Oh, it's in the minutes, so.
Yeah. You can just put, Richard said that.
Mr. Foster.
Yeah.
Instead of Mr. Grant suggested, Mr. Foster suggested. And then, uh, the other, uh, change, uh, it's under goal three, and it's maybe two-thirds of the way down, where it says, Mr. Grant wants the select board to take ownership, I think, then it says, period. So, my change would be, Mr. Grant wants the select board to take ownership of the site selection decision. And then I would combine that sentence with the next, continuing, and he noted that the select board voted, et cetera. Does it, did you get that, Debbie?
Yeah, I'm sure, was it, the site selection decision, and voted?
And he noted that the select board voted to not use the current DPW site, period.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed?
That has-
Yeah, as amended.
Yeah.
Okay, you got anything else you wanna jump on, Mark? How about a real closer, Grace Church, we can get that out of the way quick.
We've them, propose that they close the road for, uh, in front of the, what is that, in front of, in front of the community house for, uh, I just wanna pull up the exact date. There it is.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Yeah, we've done this every year, for Friday, uh, Saturday, December nineteenth, road, closed the road in front of the community house, uh, from four PM to nine PM.
Okay, and the chief of police had signed off, and the barricades would be this, that, and the other. The only thing, Stephen, I thought there was a little change in there, and I know, it doesn't make much matter. In Barry's, uh, thing, they talked about, uh, the building inspector, code provision for the electrical wires, I don't think they'll have any, 'cause they're gonna use a generator now, but- Is that new, this year? Yeah, they, I think they used some old language from last year, along with the new language, they're gonna use a generator instead of bringing the wires out of the building. Uh, I wasn't aware of that, but, okay. Yeah, the, the renter wants to use a generator instead of running the cord, so we, it doesn't matter if it stays in there, it's just that somebody forgot to clip the line up. Okay, and that's been seconded, and it's been approved by the chief, uh, chief of police.
Yeah, I, I, I think we oughta make it, obviously contingent upon meeting the conditions set by the chief of police, which is, uh, he's got some barriers up there and other things.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Get that handwork. Okay, Stephen, you wanna go ahead and take that local, uh, community, or committee, or community mitigation advisory? Sure, um, this is something we've talked about in the past, uh, there was the ethics opinion, I don't know if I need to go through all of that again, um, if I do, as a refresher, I can.
If I do, as a refresher I can, but I think you put the opinion back in the packet, didn't you?
You did.
Yeah, so, I just have a brief memo. I think really, as you can see, um, we need to appoint someone to the local community mitig- mitigation advisory committee and, um, I talked to the gaming commission ombudsman and he kind of recommended some guidance in terms of qualities you'd wanna see in, um, someone serving on that committee, and I, I agree with that, having attended the first and only meeting that they've had. There's two options that I can think of, I'm sure there's many more, but there's two options in terms of going about this. One is advertise the position, uh, or truly come up with a position description with identifying some qualities. Advertising it like you would a board or committee and kind of going through that somewhat lengthy process. Or, um, the board can kind of meet in an executive session, nominate some people, uh, have a discussion about them, about people we think would be a good fit, and kind of hash it out that way and then have somebody emerge from that process.
Can we do that in executive?
If you're talking about people and their qualities, I believe so, it's public reputation provision.
Okay.
I believe so, value, I'd have to double check.
Yeah, we double check it. It's not a discipline, anything or anything, so.
No.
Have we done that in the past? Put, you know, a notice out or like, you know, like a, an announcement?
This is not, uh, this is a new, this is kind of a new thing. I don't, I don't, I can't even think in town government of an, of an analogous position.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, because it's brand new, it's, you know, defined. Uh, the intent was always to have, I think, like a town official, elected or otherwise, as a part of this commi- mitigation committee and then the ethics commission basically said, no, you can't. And so I think it kind of upturned the whole process in terms of what types of people are being engaged to participate. So, there really is no, um, you know, like I said, precedent that we can look to to guide us.
So, what would you recommend? Did we nominate somebody or if we go into that?
I mean, it'll ta- to go through the whole process of creating the description and going through all that, it would take a while. Uh, I, I, I don't know, I mean, I think all of you know, members of the community, you've all been, I mean, Tom, you weren't here, but, um, the remainder of the board is, was heavily involved in the casino stuff and understands the mitigation issues. I think you could do it either way and end up with a, someone who's, you know, perfectly qualified to serve on the, on the, uh, committee. Um, or you could go through kind of what I'll call the long way of doing it with the advertising and everything else. I, I think it's just making sure you get the, 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 the key thing is getting the right fit.
I think the long way, as you determined, it could be, you know, open up some new opportunities for residents who would like to volunteer for the community and might feel, um, like this is a really important issue for them to get involved in, so. You know, unless we had, you know, a, a, a short list of people that we thought would be really good candidates that we could agree on, I would almost consider it might be a good idea to get some new names. I don't know what other people think.
I, I agree, I mean, uh, yeah, I mean, it's not clear to me who those five people would be, I mean, and, or whether they'd be interested in serving. I mean, to me, this seems very similar to our other committees that we solicit, uh, candidates for.
Is there consensus on that?
I, I guess my, I'm, I'm kind of at a hybrid. I, I'd intend to, uh, to solicit somebody to apply. You know, because based on what, I think the quality's the person we want or, and what it is.
Well, we can do that, I mean, I mean, you, we can open it up and then, of course, we would encour- I mean, we do that all the time, right? I mean, we encourage people to apply.
But I, you know, you never know who might come up. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, okay, what's the flavor of the board? Do you guys wanna go out for extended?
You know, I'd put on a short, yeah, I think announcement.
How long, how long, Stephen, how much time do we have to get this set up?
Probably a month or so. I mean, there, I think we're, we are by far not the only community in this boat.
Okay.
So, I think other communities are struggling to get people appointed, and so I think it'd be, if we get it done by early January.
Okay.
Maybe, even if it, even if it's the second meeting in January, we'd be fine.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I haven't received word, well, and the other thing is, the whole casino, we're gonna discuss this in a, in a minute, another agenda item, the whole thing has taken a year.
Yeah.
You know, we're now a year away, a year further away from where we were before, so certainly, in terms of getting the LCMAC organized, you know, they may be trying to get that going early next year, but in terms of like actually dealing with community mitigation, we are two years easily from that.
Okay, Richard, can I make a suggestion? I mean, this isn't a great time to be sort of engaging with people to, you know, you know, maybe, uh, put the announcement out there, wait for people to, you know, kinda clear their heads after the holidays, give them a couple of weeks after that, so that, you know, we have the interviews maybe mid to late January and then vote on it two weeks later.
As long as, as long as you don't think we got a problem on that, Stephen.
I do not think we have a problem. The only thing I'd say is, I would ask the board to submit some guidance on qualities that we're seeking.
Would, would you like Maria and myself as, well, we're, somebody who's on the policy committee, or somebody, an ad hoc committee, just to put the, get, put that together for you, Steve, or give you the suggestions, or do you wanna just do it, we'll just submit them?
Well, I just send a cou- send a few bullets. I mean, we're not looking for a, a, a long list, it's just, you know, five or, four or five bullets you can put in an advertisement. And, and I think it's reasonable to do that in this case, because it is such a unique, you know, one-off position, there's no, it's not like another committee where there's an established pattern of committee, um, functioning and, you know, decision-making, this is all brand new to everybody.
If you got a good definition of the duties and the, and the responsibilities for the meetings and all on that, yeah?
Yeah, I can cobble something together.
Meetings are all Hawaii, yeah.
Yeah, I think they're all Hawaii, but it's gonna be nice if the people know what they're getting into. How many years is that committee gonna be, uh, what's the appointment for, do you know?
That's part of, that's part of what we decide.
I don't know, I guess, I think you can decide that locally.
Yeah, do we want to have an alternate?
That's part of what we get to decide, I guess.
I mean, it's, see how hard it is to find one.
Yeah, okay.
And so we put it in like the reminder and Long Meadow News and then something on our website?
I truly think we'll end up getting the most applicants just simply by all of you referring people to it.
Yeah. Alright, so ladies and gentlemen, you're gonna be solicited to be participating, and let's see, it's going to be the, uh, that's a statewide committee, correct? Mitigation?
Mitigation Advisory Committee, is that what it's called?
No, it's, it's a local committee. The, one person who's on the committee then goes, may be called upon to go to Boston for the next level. I don't know if you remember that, when I first gave out the information, there were those layers of committees, this one's at the bottom.
Yeah.
Uh, I was actually the designated to go to Boston to kind of bring, carry the water to the higher level. But there's no guarantee that the person that's appointed from Long Meadow is that person.
Right. Okay, so folks, you could be on your way to Boston for the meetings.
I was just gonna say.
Don't say that.
Pouring cold water all over this thing.
Yeah, pouring cold water. We wait for your nominations. If you have any questions on that, anybody at home, or anybody that's listening, call the town manager, please. He's likely got the most information on it since, uh, he's been more closer to what the regulations are around this.
It is, it is a volunteer position.
It's a volunteer position, right. But I mean, if they want information, no. You should be, you've got the guidelines on what's in there. Is it anything in a, uh, I guess you got, you gave us a handout, you kicked that out to interested parties too, couldn't you?
It'll go out with the thing.
Okay. Uh, okay, so that's computer mitigation, um, I'm gonna, Stephen, on your business venture request, I'm, I'm, I'm I'm gonna request that we postpone that until next meeting when we got a full board in here, unless there's a conflict.
Uh, there's somewhat time sensitive, yeah.
Can it, can it go for two weeks?
I suppose.
Okay.
You, you don't think we can reach?
No, I'd just like to have a full board, since this is the town manager coming with the request, I'd like to have every member here that can vote on this issue.
Richard, I?
I mean, I'm not gonna be here two weeks from now, so, it's gonna be.
If there's not gonna be a full board either side.
Well, I didn't know it wasn't gonna be gone in two weeks.
Now, what does that do to your decision?
Well, that, that takes us back to, that, uh, we don't care. We'll do it six weeks from now.
No, I, it is some, it is time sensitive for me.
An emergency, what's that old expression, an emergency on your part?
No, yeah, bad planning on your part does not constitute.
An emergency on my part, no, I just.
This isn't bad planning, Stephen.
No, okay, let's go, uh, let's go your, uh, intersection improvements then.
Okay, um, so in the packet, there's a presentation from, uh, or sorry, a, a presentation developed by VHB. I will say it's a draft presentation. Neither VHB, uh, nor the director of public works, Myra Mazza, were available tonight. Uh, we do intend to have them attend the night, the twenty-first meeting to kind of go through this in detail.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
And before anybody pounces on Stephen for giving this thing, I forced this on the agenda tonight, because I wanna get the information out to the select board members, so they've got enough time to at least look at this, so they may be able to have some questions up for our next review.
Okay, wha- what document are we referring to?
This one here, Alex.
It says corridor improvement.
Corridor improvement. So that's the reason that they're not here tonight.
I'm seeing two things, says total accident and road levels.
They're all parts of it.
They're charts. I don't see a PowerPoint.
It's, no, it's a, um, what is it?
A PDF, right?
One of these other ones, yeah, one of those files.
What, what file is it called?
It's, it's in the packet.
It says something Long Meadow Conver Street, VH, VHB, Long Meadow Conver Street.
I had to get that. Are you on the site, Alex, or did you download the, did you download the packet?
I downloaded it from the site.
Are you looking at the site now, or are you?
No, no, I already downloaded it. Is that under old business or new business?
New business.
New business.
Okay, I, for some reason, that. Oh, okay, that's. Gotcha, alright, that was my problem, 'cause, 'cause I, I have trouble downloading from the emails sometimes. Alright, alright, go, go on, I'll, I'll find it.
I'll send it to you.
Alright, okay, even better.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think I would, um, we had planned on, on having a conversation about this, because again, like everything else with casinos, this has been pushed back a year, or I should say, everything related to MGM Springfield, this has been pushed back a year. But there's a lot of planning that has already gone into, um, what are the needed traffic improvements? And I think there's a strong case to be made that men, most, if not all, these traffic improvements are probably needed, whether a casino opens in Springfield or not. We just have the, um, we just have financing that's available to us because of our surrounding community agreement to offset the cost. But there's some pretty significant changes to the intersections, and I, I agree with Richard that we wanted to kind of get this information out there. I don't, our disagreement was, I don't like putting it out without context.
Right.
And I wanted to have the traffic engineer to go through it, so I don't intend to go through it, through the slides individually. Uh, I, just to let you know that they'll be here to kind of, um, go through it and, and be ready to answer questions. Uh, and I, I wanna tie the presentation, though, to the other, um, pages Alex was referring to. Separate from the VHB presentation, our own police department has been doing, um, or I should say police department, our traffic committee has been doing its own work, uh, in terms of analyzing traffic, um, townwide. This is something I think I've spoken about before, looking at our, our kind of highly ranked intersections in terms of crash volume and, um, traffic volume. And the intersection accidents, you know, is based on crash data for about three years. And you can see the little explosion symbols, I guess, um, kinda like something out of the old Batman shows.
Firecrackers.
Showing where, and they, they're sized to the numbers, so the larger the star or the ex- the explosion, the greater the number of crashes. And then you can see on the major roads, uh, you can see where, you know, red, yellow, and orange, red being the most heavily traveled, orange's the second most heavily traveled, and yellow being the third most. And some of those yellow roads really kind of defy intuitiveness when you look at, you know, the type of road they are and how they're really just small residential roads, they're clearly being used as cut-throughs. You know, roads in and around our schools are big for that. Schools are clearly a high generator of, of traffic on residential streets. So, the reason why I point those out and include them in the packet, even though they weren't really directly related to the intersection, to the corridor study we're doing as a part of our, um, surrounding community agreement, is that, you know, traffic is a system, and if you make a change in one area, it affects other areas. And we are looking at this effort in a holistic way. Uh, and so, I, I would kind of put that context on top of the discussion we're gonna be having about the Long Meadow Street improvements. One of the reasons why, um, I mean, you look at the intersection of Forest Glen and, um,
Long Meadow Street.
Long Meadow Street, it's, it's a high-traffic accident generator. And then when you look at the next page and you look at all those orange and yellow streets around there, that's all people cutting through those neighborhoods to somehow beat the light.
Can I ask one question, Stephen? What, uh, what do you consider secondary road? Is that ADT's on, uh, average daily traffic, or what was the?
Uh, I don't know, I, I see that legend, I don't know how they define it, I'm not sure, I'm sure it's vehicle trips.
Okay.
It's certainly not construction, because there are roads that are very narrow, that are secondary roads based on level of travel.
Okay.
One of the things that I think we are, are engineer.
Can I just interject? I mean, that would be a nice thing to clarify, 'cause I think primary, secondary, tertiary is like our terms of art that are in the.
Road classifications based on construction. I thought so too, I, I, that, that, that legend has changed since we did this, but, uh, e- either, I mean, I think that the point of it, the point of the color coding is the more important, the titles aren't as important. It's where's the traffic volume, based on the experience of the police department. This is really anecdotal illustration. It's really the police department's experience with ticketing and traffic and our, and our complaints to the traffic committee and everything else. I think everyone on the traffic committee, and I think VHB as well, uh, all are of the belief that if you can improve the queuing and level of service for the intersections we're studying along Meadow Street, you will dramatically reduce the need to cut through those streets that aren't really built for it. Uh, at the, especially at the north end of town, like we saw on those, and that's why we connected those two graphics. When you look at, there's actually two slides, if you go through this, called No Queuing Twenty Twenty Five, and then there's one that shows the queuing if you make the proposed improvements a little later on. And it's really, uh, really stark, when you see how much you could reduce queuing by, um, some road widening at the north end of town, uh, and better signal equipment that can be optimized. And I think that that's, so we look at it as a two-pronged thing, it's not only dealing with the spikes in traffic we may experience with the casino, it's also managing da- daily traffic better and reducing the impulse to cut through, um, by reducing the, the queuing is cars stacked up waiting in line, or tr- traffic, gridlock, or whatever you wanna call it. Um, reducing the queuing at those intersections. So, I, I think that it's a big, it's a bold plan, there's no doubt about it. I think we've had some, you know, even in the initial discussions we've had, there really aren't any great home-run level-of-service A solutions out there. Especially when you get to Forest Glen, because you have such, such a small amount of real estate to work with, because you cross into the Springfield line and then shortly thereafter, as soon as you get past the ball field in that traffic light there, you're into the highway, uh, the federal, you know, the interstate right-of-way, and that's not, there, there's no really dealing, there's only no amending that. So, it's a challenging, it's a challenging problem, and we just, you know, we're basically looking at what is the greatest um, bang for our buck we can get on, on making these improvements. Uh, and we understand that there are certain parts of this that people aren't gonna like, um, but again, it's not just, you know, status quo isn't gonna get us anywhere in terms of mitigating traffic, and traffic is by far the, the, the resident issue we spend the most time on. And so that's why I think Richard wanted to get this out there, 'cause it is a big conversation.
Yeah, go ahead.
Stephen, what, what actions are, are we gonna be, I mean, so we've been given this for a reason, I mean, so what are our, our actions that we're gonna be asked to take on this? Is it approval of a plan, is it, uh, just awareness of what's going, you know, where do we go from here?
I, well, I mean, like, like, like all things, eventually it'll be, um, there'll be funding decisions associated with this, I mean, these would be capital plan. I, I don't know if there'll be, I don't know if it'll be run to the capital plan per se, because it is, you know, I think we found with a few things that, um, you know, ca- casino mitigation stuff, funding, you know, regulations. you know, casino mitigation stuff, funding, you know, regulations, things are separate from our normal municipal processes. But we, like I said, we just want to, um, you know, lay out where we're going.
I just took a couple more questions.
Go ahead.
The, the traffic accident intersection one, I, I looked at that and I said, yeah, how, you know, but my, my comment was, is, is that changing? Has it changed? Does it, has it been like that for, it seems to me it's been like that out, the forty years I've lived in town, those are the same intersections with the same number of accidents. So the question is, is it getting worse, or is it, you know, are we just trying to finally solve a problem that we've had for thirty years? Do we know that?
I, I think the level's fairly consistent year to year. Now, over forty years, I'm sure it's gone up, because there's more cars on the road and more people passing through, but the, the last three years were really remarkably consistent. I think there were maybe a couple of intersections that moved higher than normal, but by and large, it's been fairly consistent for the three-year look back we took.
My, my only other comment is that Forest Glen and, and Long Meadow Street are Route Five. The, the, there is an agreement with the town of Springfield about the light that's the entrance to Forest Park, and I understand Bright Nights is going on and they're doing a lot of strange things, but you know, we ought to go back and review that agreement, because it's not always maintained the way they've said it would be, which I think has been, it was an agreement, and I think it's in writing, that it would be a flashing light except for very certain times of the day, and lots of times, especially in the morning when that, or in the late evening when that turns red, makes things a whole lot worse. The other thing I would comment on, there's been a personal pet peeve, is as you get off the highway onto Route Five, coming from the north of ninety-one, as you pass that, that light, for many, many years, the Long Meadow intersection, the light at Forest Glen and Western Avenue, that had been a three-lane area. And one day, the city of Springfield painted a line and made it two lanes, and traffic went to pieces that day and has never returned. And the fact that it was wide enough for three lanes once before and ought to be, I mean, I'm sure there are a lot of people who'd love to have that be three lanes again, so that when cars stop at the light, there's three lanes, and they tend to do their own thing in terms, like, traffic turning west, uh, right on Western, but I know that predates you, but it was a major change, and the city of Springfield did it when they repaved that road, and it's never been the same since.
Was, was the ball diamonds?
No, no, it, no, when they, they, that whole intersection going into Forest Park and into King Philip Stockade got paved probably five, eight years ago, I don't know, maybe ten years ago now, but they really messed up that intersection when they went, took our intersection there, coming off the highway from three lanes down to two, the traffic just started backing up all, all the way, and you know, making that three lanes would make a huge difference, just by experience of what it was, and, and
Yeah.
I'm sure there are people, you know, John Stankwitz is probably here, and he probably remembers when it was.
We, we spent a lot of time looking at that, that one intersection, and the short of it is, the right-of-way really isn't there, you'd really be squeezing it in, and the trouble is, you could get the three lanes, but in a couple hundred yards, you're down to one, and you cannot change the downstream configuration with a ramble.
It seemed to have worked well, only because there were enough people turning right, or whatever it was, but it, it made a big difference at the time, that's all I'm saying.
I think we are looking, I mean, we're, it, it's really, it's the widening on the other side, on the south side of that intersection, that, to do that.
Well, that, that's a big job, because now you got, you don't have the, the, the area, you know, on the tree belt to, to do it, I mean.
You do have, I mean, at that, the two houses on the corner are somewhat limited, but the deeper you go, it does get, there's ample right-of-way there to do what, what is being proposed.
Where, where are you talking, I'm losing it.
This is Forest Glen, coming off the highway, going across Forest Glen on Route Five, just past, just going south, just past Forest Glen, Western Avenue.
Right, no, I get that, but you said there's a lot of room where, Stephen?
In the tree belt, the, the right-of-way.
At where? You mean on the right?
Both, both sides.
Where the, where the, where the signs go.
Where we put all those signs?
There's a, there's an illustration.
No, I, I, I'm very familiar with that area.
Yeah.
It just seems narrow to me.
But the right-of-way though, where we can, where the town can build a road by rights, is at the back of the sidewalk, and you know, the sidewalks are back quite a ways in certain sections from the tree, but the tree belt is pretty generous in that area.
So, cause I was gonna ask you, in this diagram, it doesn't really look like it's going to be, as you come off Long Meadow Street and off of, um, you know, Forest Glen, as you're heading to the highway, it doesn't look like it's gonna be two lanes, is that correct? You're not gonna merge two lanes, because, you know, when you look at a bottleneck, I mean, I, I think there's only so much you can do with lights.
Yeah.
I'm wondering about, you know, like if, if coming off Forest Glen, if there was a, a pretty easy way to, to make a continuous right-hand turn, and then Long Meadow Street track would then merge, I know you're saying it's a short distance, but, um-
Are you looking at alternative one?
I'm looking at alternative two, I think. I, I, in the picture above that, looks like there's some dotted lines, but I, I'm not. It looks-
Alternative one, I think is the only one I have in here.
Cause I have alternative two, it, it looks like there's lines like there's two lanes.
This is the last slide here, is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking at the photo, and then the second from the last slide.
Okay, I see, I see what you're saying, yep.
Because, I mean, that's the whole thing, is if you could, I know it becomes like a can of worms when you have two, two lanes merging, but I also think that when we're looking at, uh, real traffic backups, which is a potential, I mean, we've lived a long time, I mean, we know that there's traffic backups in the morning when people go into work, uh, you know, but, you know, we could face regularly some traffic backups as, as Route ninety-one is, is full, and in those, as long as you have things merging and moving, it's a lot better than having them stuck and, and not moving, and so, I guess, I, I'm surprised that they don't have a, a two-lane narrowing feature here. Because I guess the other thing would be that we could have, I, I mean, I would think in today's age, you know, you could have different sort of patterns based on traffic, and so that when traffic is, is light, we could have similar to what we have now when it's light. But when it gets really jammed and it's bumper to bumper, that we'd have another sort of mode that kicks in, where people would be forced to go into a slow merge to get to that single lane that goes on the highway, but there would be movement versus, you know, no movement.
This is why we wanted to get it out early, let you just look at it.
Yeah.
Because then when the traffic engineers roll in and actually get, make their presentation, you're gonna have more of an idea than sitting there for the first time. I have one question, Alex, you definitely are gonna be gone two weeks from now?
Correct.
Okay, Stephen, I wonder if we should jump into December or January then?
That doesn't work for me.
January fourth?
No, it does not work for me.
How about the middle of January?
No, I'm saying, it, I said that there's some time sensitivity to the request.
Oh, no, I'm talking about this.
Oh, this?
This.
I thought you were gonna switch back to-
No, no, no.
Am I the only person that thought that?
No, Alex won't be here.
Okay, um, sure, I mean, like you said, there's no, this one is not time sensitive.
Right, January, can we go January fourth, bring the engineering firm in?
Yeah, that's fine, we can, we can push it, or do it later in January.
Or later in January, they've got it out, just don't lose this thing, you know, just wanna take a look at it and play with it.
Alternative two, Tom, is just your, just a point of comment?
Yeah.
Alternative one, I think, is really what is the, I say ideal, the best alternative that we've been able to come with in terms of achieving goals of, of improving level of service of traffic. That includes widening, um, Long Meadow Street to four lanes, um, for about one block.
On either side, okay. That is a better picture, I think I can see what's going on, this alternative one.
Which, what is, number eight?
And then, alternative two is, if we decide we don't want to do that, that's what, that's kind of the, um, less desirable alternative. That, that doesn't really, and honestly, with improvements to the crossing signals and things like that, the level of service may go down with that configuration. So that's, you know, that was a bad, that was a bad meeting when we had that conversation about level of service, you know, making the improvements and-
It goes down.
And it goes down, you spend the money making, you know, redoing the, the signals, but because you're adding dedicated phase, um, crossing signals, which is the modern standard that our current signals don't have, the level of service for traffic goes down, not up, and that was, that's when we realized that something more, um, um, something larger really needed to be done to, to make, to make this happen. Like I said, we know people are gonna be, um, off-put by the suggestion of widening Long Meadow Street even if it only is for one block, but that's why we have to get people discussing it, and it's kind of comfortable the notion that you want traffic to be better, just Monday through Friday, there's only a few tools in the toolbox to do it, and we're laying out our best effort.
But, but it's no longer Monday through Friday, once there's a casino in there, it could be seven days a week.
Right, but you, but you're resolving a current problem too, though. I mean, I don't think it's, we have the money to do this, so to tell people, we're not gonna solve your problem you have today, we're only gonna solve the problem that we have Mondays, Monday, Friday nights, didn't seem to be the right approach to us either.
All right, any other discussion, we'll, uh, we'll bring it up to either the January fourth or the sixteenth, Alex, we're checking ahead on your calendars.
Yeah, no, the January's fine, um, I, the only comment, it, um, maybe the presentation will make, these pictures are not intuitive to me.
It was, because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a PowerPoint that's generated using AutoCAD drawings, and so to send up, the PowerPoint we simply would not email, so he scanned, in fact, even if you convert it to a PDF with all the layers, it would be a gargantuan file, so he printed it and scanned it, which was really the only way to transmit it to us electronically.
That's fine, I, I guess all these li, it's just not clear to me what all these lines are, but I, I imagine whoever's gonna present it can allay that.
Stephen, all I can say is, we, the objection in the past to doing stuff like this has been a perceived increase in speed that will result. I'll just pass that along.
You don't get a lot of speed at eight o'clock in the morning in Forest Glen.
No, but, yeah, four-lane road, that's-
But on Forest Glen, cutting, going down Laurel and cutting around the corner of Forest Glen, people do generate speed, because they're trying to beat the light, because of all the, I mean, that's,
Yeah.
It really is, you know, when people talk, like Colony Hills Neighbor Association's talked to us about this. The solution to their problem, and from a traffic standpoint, is really much more about improving that intersection than it is about, like, doing something in the Colony Hills roads, because the traffic is going through there to get to that point, because they want to beat the gridlock of the intersection.
Every morning, I know.
So we'll bring it back with the engineering firm, and if anybody's got any questions in advance, if you see something, when you look over the thing you want to chat about, send them to Stephen.
If you could note this question, Stephen, it looks like we would be eating into Forest Park in some way, could we just address how we're able to do that?
All the work, I believe, is scheduled, I can answer that right now.
Okay.
Everything is projected to be within the right-of-way, based on plans you have in front of you.
Alright.
And, and the other thing I'll say is, we will engage the city of Springfield, and we've, we've been talking to some of their engineers and some of their folks, I mean, we talk to them regularly about traffic issues, because we share so many, you know, points of, of injury. But we will be engaged in the city of Springfieldness, and certainly having Mario on board, who just came to us from the city of Springfield, will be helpful in making sure communication's open.
We open the Forest Park cut-through.
Well, you know, it's interesting, there's a sign now on Route Five going north into Long Meadows, says Viaduct Project, Seek Alternative Routes, of which there are none, you know, I mean, it's it, it is a sort of, like, you're, you're in deep trouble, and there's nothing you can do about it.
Go through Agawam or-
Right, yeah, walk through Forest Park, maybe.
You know, I, I should have probably, could have probably brought this up, um, before, but that is something that our public safety departments are actively engaged with the city of Springfield on, is finding those alternate routes for transport to the hospital, uh, as well as responding to the highway. But that's one of the things we are actively looking at, is better ways to do that, and because, as you, as you suggest, if we have someone have a, an ambulance call here at their home in Long Meadow, and we have to get them to Bay State, right now, we go the highway.
Right.
But if the highway is stopped, you have to find other routes, and one of the things that we've worked the city of Springfield on is the, we're talking about the Opticon
That flip lights.
Transponder, that flip, and that's one of the things that we're, that the, the fire department's proactively looking at, um, tying into.
The New York City ambulances that flip traffic lights as the ambulance comes down.
Yeah, and Springfield has them, and they say that they have not only, uh, helped respond tremendously, but reduced accidents in emergency response vehicles, so, uh, Chief Dearborn has already, has already engaged Chief Conan in Springfield, and we are looking at getting our own equipment for the ambulances, as well as the town manager vehicle. That was probably just made up.
Okay, can we, uh, can we move into your business venture?
Sure.
Cause you're gonna bring that back with the engineers.
Right. I'm just sending a note here to the consultant before I forget.
Okay. Well, I'll start, and we can cut down on all the chit-chat that you're gonna make on this, Stephen's given a presentation tonight, or a letter here under five point one of the town charter, when the town manager shall be allowed to engage in outside occupations with the approval of the board, and he has three scenarios he's, he's outlined down in the memorandum for our consideration. Two of them are basically on-demand type things, where he might want to go and do a session here and there, and the, but the other, the third one down actually is a business venture that he's been, uh, he can give more detail on it, but it's something that's slowly, oh, you also typing? Okay, go ahead.
So as Richard noted, there's been a couple of things that, um, have come up, that I've had opportunities to do that I've said no to, and they're not, you know, I, I spend a lot of time doing this job, so I don't have a tremendous amount of free time, but I, I try hard to find ways to balance work and home life, as well as, you know, outside interests and hobbies. And I truthfully think I'm somewhat out of balance in that regard, and so these things that I have proposed, um, are really ways to kind of strike a better balance in my own life, um, that are also things I think will help me develop professionally. At least the, the ability to, um, search, to, to participate in search panels, uh, in communities that are doing town manager searches, is something, in the interviews I've had in front of these panels, I've always found them very engaging, uh, getting the feedback, and I'd like to be on the other side of that. Uh, and then teaching classes as an adjunct professor is something that I've wanted to do for a while.
Can I ask you one question before you go on? What, what's the time involvement on a search panel?
An afternoon.
Okay. Afternoon, possibly overnight travel if it's a long-way one, or are they all locals?
I, I don't know that I'd have the ability to do that, if it was an overnight travel, I don't think I could do it.
Okay.
Because like I said, I don't have a tremendous amount of time, my wife travels for her work, so there are time, you know, my time is fairly limited. So, things that were, you know, if, if they were, and I don't want to drive to, you know, central Vermont to do a search panel, would be ones that were kind of convenient. But I've been given the opportunity to do ones that were relatively close, uh, and I've, I've said no because of the restriction on the charter. Uh, and I've also, for a long time, I've wanted to try and develop, um, a class as an adjunct professor on a, on a variety of subjects. Uh, I've most recently talked to, uh, Bay Path University, that they do have adjunct professorship opportunities, they've got some, um, courses that I think I could connect with, with my experience and my academic background. But in, like, there are, there's usually, um, usually paid to be an adjunct professor, I think it's a few thousand dollars. Similarly, there's a, um, stipend for, you know, mileage and expenses to serve on one of the panels. You know, that, the stipend doesn't really interest me all that much, I, I view it more as a professional development opportunity, and something I, I view as kind of a town manager networking function, if the board disagrees, I can certainly change my opinion on that, but, um, that I do believe helps, makes me a better town manager. The class, uh, I mean, the first, the search panels makes me directly a better town manager, because I'm talking about town management with other people and getting their ideas. The coursework, I think, makes me a better, um, professional, I think there would be direct tie-ins to my work, but it's less of a direct, direct connection. And I want to have the opportunity to kind of develop something, and if an opportunity comes along kind of quickly, I'm asking for kind of generic approval here, so I don't have to keep something on hold, you know, in the, in the future. Uh, and then the last one is, um, the most, most time-sensitive one, I, um, a friend of mine, a Long Meadow resident, um, develops apps, and I, before I, um, started talking to him about this thing, I knew virtually nothing about developing an app. And I, um, before I um started talking to him about this thing, I knew virtually nothing about developing an app. Um, you can probably still feel a thimble with what I know, um, but what I do know a lot about is uh politics. I um, I've been a student of politics for over twenty years and have followed national politics closely, you know, for many, many years, and it's, you know, been kind of one of my hobbies. Um, and so, as I know here, he uh has developed a political themed trivia app, uh and it launches actually Friday. And um it's called Political Run, and it's basically. Uh, you can either have the Democratic primary version, the Republican primary version, you choose your candidate you wanna play at, and you play. And you go head to head with somebody through Facebook, or, you know, you can play a random game, you just play head to head trivia, and it's really fun. Um, but he has asked that I um use some of my uh relationships and connections that I have retained since my time um working in Capitol Hill. Um, to help market the app, um, really, again, largely through social media, kind of, you know, nights, weekends, things like that. It's not really, you know, you can be on social media at any time. And, you know, he's offered me, I, I mean, he's offered me a percentage, um, you know, if the, to help him with that. Um, now, I don't know if the app is gonna make any money or not, so if you're asking me, what am I gonna make on this, I have no idea, possibly zero. Um, you know, this is something that I think is, is a, is a fun game, I would pro- I would download it and play it myself and, you know, challenge friends of mine through Facebook anyway. Because I think it's a, it's a fun thing, um, but because I would be um spending some of my personal time um doing this with the possibility of compensation. I did believe that it did constitute a business venture, and I should get the board's uh approval before I, I, you know, proceeded in kind of a formalized way.
I see what you mean, you're about time sensitive now.
Cut, well, it launches Friday, and from what I'm told in the app world, the first week is the most important week to getting the word out and marketing it. So the expectation would be that I would be, again, kind of, you know, in my own time. You know, letting friends and family know, um, that this is out there, saying, hey, you know, let's get on and, and play, I'll challenge you to a trivia game, you know, like you would for. Download, if anybody's downloaded Trivia Crack, it's kind of based on, that's the most popular trivia game on, in the App Store, this one is based off of that. Um, you know, like I said, I, I don't view this as a conflict of interest, um, there's really no financial benefit tied to my work as a town manager. This is something that is, I would do in my personal time. Um, you know, there's no interface with town vendors, I can tell you that I'm not Facebook friends, really with anybody in Long Meadow, except for uh my friend here. And only because we could, so he could, he could show me how the thing works. Um, so I don't see a situation where I am asking residents or vendors or town employees to, you know, hey, buy my app, or any, you know, I mean, if people want to, that's fine. But really, it's the networking with people that I, you know, went to grad school with or worked on Capitol Hill with, who have now advanced in their careers as well and are in position to. Um, promote this in a much more broad-based way than, than I could.
And, are you done?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I, I mean, there's no gambling involved when this trivia, it's not trivia, there's no money.
No, no, like I said.
Compete with MGM or anything.
No, no, it's really, like I said, Trivia Crack is the most, i- it's, and Trivia Crack's got a dumb name for a game, but it's basically, i- i- if you go on, there's, it, there's an ad-free version. So you can play for free, and then there isn't an ad, or sorry, there's a free version, there's an ad-free version, like all apps. You can have the ads, or you can buy one for a few bucks for, for no ads, and then there are in-app purchases for like extra points. I mean, I don't, I don't play online games, this is really the first app game I've ever played.
I won't be worried about all the details, I'm telling you.
And I, I should, I should add, I have no, you know, there's no formalized business relationship, I have not invested any of my own money in this, this is really just. Really, it started out as me helping out a friend who happens to be a Long Meadow resident.
And no trivia questions about the select board specifically, right?
No.
Okay.
Not specifically.
Well, I, you know, thanks for coming to us to, to run this by us, I appreciate that, and I, I agree with you. I, I think diversity is a really important part in, in our life to help us maintain our mental health. I mean, I, I probably go overboard, I have three different paid gigs that I do, but I, I think you take a little bit from each thing. And so, um, going to uh other towns and help with selection process, I think that's valuable uh to us and, and, and to you. Uh, teaching classes, you know, when I teach a class, even if I teach a class like research, it always surprises me how, whatever I'm working on in my other jobs. How I'm able to take something from that class to, to help me get better solutions, uh or to, um. You know, just open, expand my thinking, and so I, I think teaching and, and preparing, of course, to college level is really a, a good experience. And the, the uh trivia game, I, I just, I don't see how that will interfere, it sounds like something you're gonna be doing on your own private time. And uh, so, thank you for letting us know what your plans are, Richard.
So, um, I mean, I guess the, the question that this kind of raises for me, you know, is something that we haven't really talked about in the past. Um, which is, you know, uh, like, cause I, I just don't know, like, what are, what is your normal work hours? I mean, we have, I mean, we literally, I don't think we've ever talked about this, cause I mean, you really don't have a day-to-day supervisor, you know, and. Um, so the thing that I wanna kind of understand better is sort of what, what are your current, what's your current tour of duty? And, and how, how would uh these things fit into that?
Um, I can answer that question for you, Alex. Uh, section three of my contract, works weeks shall consist of normal business hours and other hours during which the town manager will be required to tend the means of the board. Or such other means as the board shall require, as required or necessitated for the proper performance of the manager's duties and responsibilities. Subject to all the provisions of this agreement, the town manager will be absent from the office for a day for any reason, town manager shall notify the chair, chairperson of the board. Or in his or absence vice chair, the clerk of the board. So it's normal business hours, but.
Okay, normal business, I mean, the reason why I ask is, I mean, you know, in the federal government, I mean, there's this whole telework initiative. I mean, people are, there, there's more and more flexibility to people's.
Mm-hmm.
Job, right, I mean, so it's not an obvious answer. Um, and so, you know, one of the things that comes up, especially with the adjunct professor, cause I remember looking at this at one point. With Bay Path or Springfield College or whatever, you know, when they wanna give a course, it's often during the day, it's not during the night. Um, so, I mean, would you envision yourself, and I assume these search panels, that would also be during what would otherwise be your normal tour of duty? So I guess, you know, my question is, I mean, do I have that right? I mean, would it be your normal tour of duty, and sort of how, how would that fit in? And how, how would, how would that adjust your, your work hours, if at all?
Um, I, I don't know, I mean, I think, yeah, the search panels are usually during the day, I think it breaks down like this, if I'm getting paid for it, I use leave. And if I am, if it is a, if there's a bona fide professional development aspect to it, which I think, again, the search panel is one, I definitely think there is. Um, then I would look at it as a, you know, as a professional development. Um, um, provision of my contract as well. Um, you know, I, I, and if, if the board, if the board wants to set the parameter that I have to use leave every time I do it, then, you know, I can do that. And then I would, and the compensation question wouldn't be in question, I'd, I would be able to take the compensa- compensation without, um, without question. Um, but I, I guess, I don't know, I have, I, I don't have one scheduled, that, you know, there are online courses, my wife has been a, was a adjunct professor for the University of Maryland. And I don't think she ever set foot in College Park. So, I mean, it's one of those things where I, I don't know the form of it, I, again, this is really kind of a blanket provision, because when these things come up, usually it's fairly quickly, and I kinda wanna set the parameters. Um, you know, I, I think for the folks at home, and you know, for the folks at home, I'm not really an hourly employee, where I come in and I have a hourly timesheet. I mean, I have normal business hours, like all the department heads and salaried professional administrative technical employees. You know, I'm, you know, what, it's like, if, if, uh, if I'm at an event or my kid's basketball game, and someone's asked me questions about leaf pickup. Or, you know, our deal with MGM or something like that, which happens fairly frequently, you know, am I on the clock, so to speak? Or if I'm at, at ten o'clock at night answering emails, because I just couldn't get to them during the day, you know, where does that all fall? And I think I, you know, I do spend a lot of time on the job, I, I do think I've demonstrated my commitment to the work, I don't think that any of these things um impact that commitment. And I, as I state, as I, as I state in the memo, the, being the town manager of Long Meadow, um, is my number one professional commitment. Um, and then being a husband and a father is my number one overall commitment. And if any of these things diminish my ability to do either of those, then I, then they will clearly get dropped.
Also, I, I think you, you hit on a point that's well worth put, uh, you're basically on call twenty-four seven. And you're paid a salary, like you're not being compensated now when it's ten o'clock at night. Uh, that's why a person in your position, if you need to take a couple hours off, you take a couple hours off. You don't need to worry about leave every time, because I imagine if you kept track of your comp time, it would be unbelievable. There's, there's accumulation of time, you devote.
There's a part of me that wishes I was an hourly employee, cause I'd be banned over time.
I used to be salaried too, I know the pain, the, the thing it can be. Uh, I, I, everybody would have the same concerns that Alex, Alex had presented, and I agree with your analogy on the number one, that's part of professional development. I think that clearly falls under what reasonable people would say, this is acceptable in the outside fields. You said on the other one that if you gave a class and it was compensated, you'd like to take leave to do it. It still puts a, a work burden back on us, but I, I think you're talking, what, a couple hours for a class, so it's not, there's certainly a lot of time in the day. I have seen you come in and, and I've communicated with you late at night, when I know when you're emailing, so I know you're not an eight to five person. The, the app thing, I, to me, that's just a no-brainer, it's just something that you're, you know, it's no connection to work, something you're doing on your own side. You've sat and had a couple beers with a guy, and you've got to dream this app thing up, and before you know it, the guy says, I'm gonna post this app, and you said, whoops. Okay, I better get with the board, and I appreciate that. So I don't, I don't have a problem with any one of those items, as long as they stay within reasonable levels of uh, of inconvenience. And, and you know, I don't think we would know until you start, and I know you approached one time to be on a panel, and a panel fell apart. So I think there's been one time since I've been in the chair that Stephen's had an opportunity to work on a panel, so this is not something that comes up every week. He's not out searching the field to become panel members, but, you know, it's professional development, we've all been in professional development. I used to be on panels, I was called the public speaker for parks and recreation conventions, I was a public speaker, keynote speaker for, called twice for Pennsylvania State Parks. And I was with the National Park, and I had nothing to do with the National Parks, but once you're in that circuit, you tend to get called. And I, and I think it, I'd, I'd like to see where it goes before I straddle a lot of restrictions on it. But certainly, if, if future boards started saying, well, Stephen's not here, he's all giving courses, then we'd like to reconsider the thing, which we could easily do. But I, I don't think, I personally don't think Stephen's gonna abuse this. And I'm usually more restrictive, like it in anybody on employees' time, but I also understand, if you get a professional manager and you're letting them deal with the town and run the town. And the clocks run like this, you've gotta cut a little bit more slack too, because you've hired a professional manager and you let them make up some of their own minds on this stuff. Mark?
Yeah, I, I, I guess I got a, a, a kind of a mixed take on this, Stephen, and, and it, you know, it goes back to, I have a history of working for a company. And they said, you work for us twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and we may not ask you all twenty-four hours, all seven days, but we wanna make sure you're available. On the other hand, I look at this and I see something like the, the, being on panels for interviewing, and very honestly, I think that is beneficial to us for you to, to participate in that. And I'd love to encourage you, I think there ought to be some constraints, if they're paying you, we're not paying you, it's that simple. If, if, if you're getting paid for it, take leave from us, take vacation day, take whatever it is, and, and, and that would be my take on, on something like that, that we're, we're not paying you twice.
I agree with that.
You know, uh, the, the trivial thing, I have no clue what that is, I don't know what, how much time it is, whatever it is, uh, you know, I'm, I'm assuming and hoping that it's, you're gonna, you fit it in around your primary job. The, the one I do have concern about is an adjunct professorship, only because it comes with, from my understanding, and again, I hadn't considered this online thing. Uh, uh, a calendar commitment, you know, for a semester, that it might be every Tuesday and Thursday evening, it might be Mondays and whatever it is. Whether it's grading papers or whatever it is, it comes with a, a broader commitment that, that may require you to make a decision to us and them. That based on, most of our select board meetings are Monday nights, but, you know, we might have a Tuesday night town meeting, or a Wednesday night something else. And, and for you not to be available, and, and we've had, in fact, I remember we had um members of the select board, I, you know, I can't meet on Thursdays, and it's really annoying. But we did without the select board member, but I wouldn't wanna do without a town manager. And I'm, I guess my personal summary is, I'd love to know more about what this professorship is. To me, that's a, a more of a commitment, because it's a, it's an ongoing commitment as opposed to a, don't take this the wrong way, but a, a fill-in. A- a- as, as, as appropriate commitment, the, the trivial thing I, trivia thing, pardon me, or the app thing, I, I really see as something that you would and could fit around. There's, it's not a, a fixed schedule, so from my perspective, you know, I, I, I'm kind of a two out of three on, on this thing. That I, I'm very concerned about what I think of as more traditional, being an adjunct professor with class schedules.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Um, I hear, I hear you, and obviously, my first thought, like I said, if the class schedule's being offered was a Monday night, then it's a no-go for me. I mean, you know, my son had basketball practice tonight, and I'm here, so the select board meetings are my priority. Uh, it's clearly, I have a contractual obligation, but I also believe I have a professional obligation to be here and serve the select board, it's my first priority. Um, what this, what I'm asking for here is to permission, is to permission to explore it, knowing that I can go follow through with it. If I get to a point with, whether it's Bay Path or Western New England, or whoever it is, or if I get to the point where, okay, there's the opportunity for you to do this, here's the class we need, here's the schedule we can offer it. I can say yes or no, and not have to, you know, and not have to come back to get permission just to even, in concept, do it. Um, like I said, my commitment in terms of being here for meetings is, I laid forth in the contract, and if I said, I can't be at Monday's meeting, cause I have to teach a class, the board would say, you're not excused. You know, there you go, and I think that that's, you know, a, a perfectly fine thing, I mean, we, we've spent some time with Bernie Lynch, and I've spent time with him outside of, of our sessions and talked to him. And he, he talks a lot about the courses he taught over the course of his career, and I think he got a lot of benefit of it, and some, to some extent, that's what kind of motivated me is. He did, even the other night at the library, he talked about things, how he was able to articulate concepts in public administration by developing a lesson plan and lecturing to a group of students. And to me, that's something really intriguing to me that I think I could benefit from. If you wanted to leave it off the list, I'm not gonna shed any tears, if this was something that I'd like to do. Like I said, I don't have a lot of spare time to burn, it's possible I never follow through on it, I don't have a, an iron in that particular fire. Um, it just was more, since I knew I was gonna ask for the app, I thought I'd put the other two on that kind of come up, that have come up in the, in the recent past. You know, there's one, I did ask on one panel, but there were a few others that I just said no to, just cause the, the timing wasn't right for me. Um, and I know there are, and everyone, I know there are opportunities for teaching classes out there, I just haven't pursued them.
And the reason we didn't bring that to the board is because it canceled before we had a next meeting, cause he had a conversation with us, and he said, okay, we'll take it to the board, and the thing canceled. And it was a, I forget where it was, a panels, but.
Richard?
Um, I mean, I, I think to move forward on this, we have to have, it says that we have to approve it in advance in writing. So that, what that tells me is that, I mean, we can't just have an oral vote on this, I mean, we, we actually have to sign something. And, and like, there's gonna be like a resolution that we're approving. Um, you know, and, and I think that language would, you know, maybe be a little specific about the parameters of it. I mean, I guess, you know, you know, my view on, and this is why I was asking about your tour of duty, Stephen, because, you know, I, I think it. To me, to have a, a, a professional person, you know, has the ability to sort of move their work around a little bit during the day. So even if you were to teach a class, say it was in the afternoon, if you committed to saying, look, I'm gonna work two hours after the kids go to bed. I'm okay with that, you know, um, but if on the other hand, your expectation is, look, you know, I, I work, you know, eight thirty to five, and, and, and that's a. and, and, and that's a, you know, that's a legitimate position to take, given your contract, you know, that's a different story. Um, I don't know. I mean, could you address that point?
I'm the only person in town hall who knows what the cleaning people look like. So, you know, I, I think I've proven that I'm not an, uh, an eight to five, you know, eight-thirty to five, eight-thirty to four-thirty, you know, slide down the dinosaur, yabba dabba doo. I, I, you know, I think the good thing about everything being on Google email is that there's a long digital track of me working outside of normal business hours. Um, you know, it's, it's really, it's not hours, it's output. And that's where, that's, that's how, when I have conversations with salaried employees about their hours, I say, we don't own your time, we own your output. It's, and, and under, I'm told by our labor council, under Fair Labor Standards Act, that's kind of the defining line. You can either own their time or their output. When you're salaried, it's your output, as you said. Um, I'd like to think that, you know, even in the discussion of my town manager's report as an example of the amount of information that I have and work on and develop and the amount of time I'm in the office and the times that I'm on my, that I'm doing emails and things like that when I'm not in the office, would have already established that, you know, I'm willing to put in the time and I don't see any of these, um, being in conflict with that. It just truthfully gives me something to focus, to think about besides work, which I, I think I need. Um, and, you know, the app thing is kind of an opportunity that may help me provide a better life for my family. It may not. Who the hell knows? It's like I said, it's been mostly just a fun thing. Um, and then the other two, like I said, are much more related to professional development. Um, if you wanna think about the other two, um, that's fine. Um, like I said, the app is getting ready to launch Friday and I wanna be able to help our, um, my friend here in town, you know, have success with, with the venture. Um, in terms of the writing, Alex, I, I gave that some thought. I just, I assumed for the sake of argument that the minutes would be the written record of the board approval, uh, because I thought about, should I draft a resolution, but I didn't wanna overstep by-
Well, I, I kinda thought the same thing, that, that the minutes would be the approval.
Mm-hmm. It'll be-
I may be wrong. You know, whether they make-
That wouldn't be my idea of writing.
That's a written record.
Um, I mean, I have this, I have my memo printed, you know, I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna hold off on doing a formal resolution, that's fine. It just, like I said, it kind of throws me off for, for my purposes.
Well, I'd like to forward a motion that the, uh, the business venture request from the town manager, you know, is, is, is approved. Uh, but we asked the town manager to coordinate any of the listed opportunities with the select board chair, just to, um, make sure there's no interference with his duties.
That makes sense.
Doesn't seem reasonable.
I think that would take place anyway.
It, it would.
Yeah, it's just- But it's okay with that on, I guess.
And I'm happy to notify the board when I'm no longer engaged in any of these things too.
So I-
Well, the fact is, you're not engaged in them now. I think you ought to, ought to be the other way around.
If, if the board approves it, I would, yeah, I mean, I'm happy. Like I said, this is all about trying to keep communication open and build trust and relationships and all that stuff, good stuff we've been hearing about.
Well, I'll second the motion for discussion. We need to get it, uh, in discussion. We've had quite a discussion about it already before a motion, but-
Yeah, I think, you know, they have classes, they have a lot of evening classes, date classes. I think the hard part for you, Stephen, you know, I've done, for, I think I've adjuncted about five different schools in the area, is that as soon as you run into conflicts, um, then they don't rehire you, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
That's the hard part. And, and I, I just, I feel for you, trying to teach as an adjunct, working a job like this. But it would be nice if it worked out for you.
I, I know Alex can sit with that. I'm also the co-coach of my daughter's basketball team. Actually, both my kids are in basketball. So there's, there's no class teaching until minimally basketball season is over. I'm amazed at the level of commitment for that.
Alex, the one item here, such action approved in advance in a writing, I guess there, there is, if we wanna interpret, uh, that way, I, we could get around that too pretty easy, because you could authorize, if, if we voted to approve it, you could authorize me to, uh, approve in writing as representative of the select board. I could sign the thing, said it's approved in advance in writing. Cause this could be, his said it's advanced, could be by this Friday, I think, is when he said this app thing takes off. And certainly none of this other stuff would kick in until well after Friday, because there's nothing right now that you're even aware of. Is this Stephen?
That's the only thing that's time sensitive.
So, so your proposal would be, at least with respect to the app, that we would authorize you to s- sign some documents?
Yeah.
Authorizing it?
Yeah, if, if we wanted to do it, that we had to sign it, the board could authorize me to sign on their behalf by vote.
I think, what I would suggest is a, a, a document that says on Monday, September, or December seventh, the Long Meadow Select Board, i- if you guys do vote for it, the Long Meadow Select, Select Board voted by a vote of X to approve, um, the attached business venture request, subject to the following conditions that Tom just laid out in his motion, attach the memo and then, um, you know, this, this action is certified in writing by the signature of the chair.
Yeah, it'd be if I'm authorized to do that on behalf of the board.
Yeah, or you can even have Kathy Ingraham stamp him for it if you really wanted to go the extra mile.
That's up to you guys. I, you can go sign it.
I, I mean, I, I guess I would propose approving, proving the app thing along the lines of what you just suggested. And then we can come back the next meeting or the meeting after, whatever, where we actually have a resolution or something that sets out the other two. Does that make sense?
I appreciate that.
You wanna make a amendment to the motion then?
Yeah, so I, I would move to amend Tom's motion, uh, to, uh, authorize the chair to sign a document on behalf of the select board, uh, approving the substance of what Stephen is proposing as memorandum with respect to the political themed trivia app.
Okay. And then we'll reschedule the other two items back with the board?
When we have a document.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Do you have a second one?
Yeah, you second on the motion. I'll second it, 'cause I second this motion. Okay, will, uh, any other discussion on the amended, amended part? No, no discussion? All in favor?
So we should, wait a minute, we should vote on the amendment?
That's what we're doing.
Okay, all right.
We'll vote on the amendment.
All right.
All in favor? Okay. Amendment passes. Any, any discussion on the original motion?
As amended.
Which now becomes the amendment anyway. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The, the final motion as amended.
So the amendment would actually become the motion?
Did you just vote on it the first time?
We, we voted on the amendment, but it actually modifies the motion and it becomes the motion, because we stripped off the other two things with the amendment.
Yeah, they're just approving the, uh, app.
The app right now, approval. And we'll get the, the paperwork signed up in the proper forms and we'll bring it forth the next meeting.
And if you could just share us with whatever you end up signing.
Yeah, I will. I will go ahead and scan it and send it out to you. Uh, this, Stephen, well, of course, we don't know what the, you're not gonna be here next meeting, you'll be here the one after. Is there any of this other stuff that you, has any pressing nature that we'd need to bring it back for January?
No, it's just like I said, it was more, I was gonna be at, requesting for the app and I thought, these other two things kind of come up sporadically.
Okay.
And I thought if it, if they're generic enough-
Well, they could still come up and you could come to the board at any time.
And they're, I mean, they are a very common thing. I mean, typically town manager contracts carry the approval to do that. I mean, our charter has that language.
Right.
Um, so it was more asking for generic, but I, you know, the points you raise are, are well taken. And voting on something generic is not as enticing as voting on something specific.
True. Okay, any other, uh, business for the common good? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're getting ready to adjourn and we're gonna see you in two weeks. I believe it'd be the twenty-first of December and, um, just before Christmas. So we wish, I hope you, everybody has a peaceful, a nice two weeks off and we'll see you in a couple weeks. A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? We have a quorum. Alex went out, so, good night, ladies and gentlemen.
Good night.